Morning, everyone. So that means you can hear me. I saw Natalie's hand wave, so. Morning.
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 Great, it's eight thirty. Um, morning Karen. Uh, let me make sure everyone from councils here. I've got Shelley, Natalie, Mike, Wes. I don't see Sheena. No Sheena. Okay, but we're gonna start because it's eight thirty. So welcome, everyone. Sorry this had to move online. I was actually really hoping to see everyone in person. But I was thinking about, you know, such a large crowd with three different regional partners. I thought it might be a little bit. Be better to err on the side of caution right now. So thank you Karen and everyone from the from the region for adapting so quickly. Uh, I've got an agenda here. Uh, we're calling this a workshop, so there's no, no motions or anything that need to be read. We've got the EMRB up first, so why don't we go around and introduce ourselves, council, I mean, to Karen and Karen, who do you have with your staff today?
Today I have Cindy LeBlanc, who's the Director of Corporate and Stakeholder Relations.
Okay, so I will let council introduce themselves and then you two can introduce yourselves and then we'll get right into your presentations. Okay? Awesome. All right, Shelley, you're at the top of my meeting. You want to go first?
It's Cindy and Karen. It's Shelley Birmansky here, St. Albert City Councillor.
Natalie?
Natalie Jolly.
And I think everyone knows Wes, but Wes, go ahead. Is Wes frozen? You might be all come back to him, Mike?
I think we're all frozen on this temperature. Uh, Mike Killick, new City Councillor for City of St. Albert. Uh, great to be here this morning and I'm slightly familiar with EMRB, uh, due to some of the planning and and, uh, um, work that was done between EMRB and setting the parameters for flourish and aligning with density studies, those kind of things. So had a little bit of a background there, but not much and look forward to this morning.
All right, and Council Mackay?
I'm here. Hi, hi Karen. I, Karen, I have a gift for you from Ontario. So, uh, next time, next time we meet, we'll share.
And Wes, you are frozen. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Karen. Unfortunately, I don't have a gift for you from Ontario. Uh, but, uh, in any case, it's good to see you and good to see your team this morning. Looking forward to your presentation. Thanks.
All right. Thank you both for joining us. Um, I'm Kathy. I'm the mayor and Karen, you want to take it over and introduce your team and you can get right into your presentation.
Sure. So maybe Cindy, why don't we start with you? Why don't you introduce yourself and then I'll introduce myself and just get going.
Cindy LeBlanc, I'm the Director of Corporate and Stakeholder Relations with the EMRB. Nice to meet you all.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having us on this cold morning, although I think none of us have probably left our homes yet. Um, I, I did have to, I was going to say that I am was really disappointed that we weren't going to see each other in, uh, together this morning. Um, this is a presentation that, um, we have been delivering throughout the region. So every, uh, council, um, member municipality receives the same presentation and, uh, it's been a pleasure to be going out to each one of our member municipalities and meeting everyone, um, and, and just getting to know folks. So as Mayor Heron said, I'm Karen Wychek and I'm the CEO of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board. Today, we're just going to go through and give you an overview of the EMRB and some of the, the work, uh, that has been underway. Our mandate and the value, talk about the value of this very important table. I welcome your questions at the end of the presentation and happy, have subsequent conversations to that as well. So who is the EMRB? Membership in the EMRB, uh, is mandatory and is determined by those municipalities with populations of five thousand or more. So our thirteen member municipalities are a diverse group of six cities, four counties and three towns. And with nearly ninety-five hundred square kilometers in the heart of Alberta, our region accounts for one-third of the province's population with close to one point three million citizens and seven hundred and fifty thousand jobs. Our area is the second youngest and second fastest growing metropolitan region in, in Canada, making regional planning truly essential. And, uh, we like to think that the EMRB has one shared vision. So a look at, uh, regional collaboration. How did we get to this one shared vision? The region as a whole and sub long history of intermunicipal collaboration, whether it be voluntary or mandatory boards like the Alberta Capital Region Alliance or Accra, Edmonton Global, the Tri-Region and of course, uh, the industrial heartland. And the outcomes of these collaborations have resulted in major infrastructure like the Anthony Hendy. So when we look back, what's really quite stunning to me is that in the late nineteen forties, we actually started to see, uh, times when collaboration began. It happened because of the massive growth caused by the oil boom and a sense of urgency emerged around the need to plan regionally. This resulted in the first Edmonton District Planning Commission where membership was voluntary. In nineteen fifty-six, the McNally Commission concluded that the piecemeal pattern of development both around Edmonton and Calgary was, was inappropriate and recommended mandatory metropolitan planning at that time. This leads the province to mandate for the first time that municipalities work together to develop a plan. Legislation was amended in nineteen sixty-three to make the Edmonton Regional Planning Commission a mandatory regional planning body. The territory for this actually, for this commission actually extended all the way out to the Yellowhead area. By the nineteen eighties, the Planning Commission is restructured to focus more on the Edmonton Metropolitan Region and it adopts the first regional plan. And then fast forward about fifteen years. In the mid nineteen nineties, a combination of the provincial government's political philosophy of the day, the economic downturn and tensions among members at the Regional Planning Commission led the government of Alberta to dissolve the commissions and devolve all planning authority back to individual member municipalities. Between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and ten, the region experienced a tremendous gap in planning policy while at the same time faced, uh, tremendous growth. And there were tensions between municipalities. And in speaking to members of the development community, it was really chaos for them at the time. They noted, uh, an incredible lack of certainty for them. And yet despite that, many former members of the Edmonton Metro Planning Committee formed a new voluntary body called the Capital Region Forum, which in nineteen ninety-seven became Accra. At the start of a new century, we see two important reports commissioned, the Hindman Report and then the Radke Report in two thousand and seven. Both of these reports concluded that strengthening, uh, the region, especially the Edmonton Metropolitan Region was not a choice. It was in fact a necessity. This prompts Premier Sal Stelmac in two thousand and eight to establish the Capital Region Board to develop a long-term integrated growth management plan. Of course, there were twenty-four municipalities that made up the CRB and then in, in late two thousand and sixteen, the Capital Region Board approved and delivered the updated growth plan. And in two thousand and seventeen, while the growth plan was being looked at, the government of Alberta also restructured the board and reduced the number of municipalities from twenty-four to thirteen with a rebranding to the Edmonton Metropolitan Board or the EMRB as you know it today. So if our history tells us anything, it's that by working together, we are better positioned to seize opportunities and address the challenges of a growing and integrated region. The concept of growth management boards is well understood to be an effective way to position regions like ours where multiple municipalities are in proximity to a major urban center. The EMRB is one of two provincially mandated growth management boards in Alberta. There are effective regional growth management boards, uh, throughout Canada, however, including Toronto, Montreal, Winnipeg and Vancouver. We provide a blueprint and a policy framework that helps create the conditions for growth, they've, that for cost efficient growth that maximizes economic opportunity and improves quality of life. And we do this through developing growth and servicing plans that guide the planning and service delivery for the region. Developing coordinating policies for regional infrastructure investment and service delivery. Ensuring efficient use of land, including environmentally responsible land use planning, providing certainty for investors and developers and promoting sustainable and economic wellbeing and competitiveness throughout the region. Enabling responsible growth means creating the conditions for maximizing cost efficient growth and developing and implementing policies for cost sharing, economic development and investment, improving the quality of life of our residents, planning and building for future generations. And truly one of the things that I think is most important, fostering dynamic regional conversations that lead to new opportunities and the ability to solve our problems together. The board and mandate are enabled by provincial regulation under the MGA. The board shall, under the, under this mandate, promote the long-term sustainability of the Edmonton Metro Region. Ensure environmentally responsible land use planning and growth and efficient use of land growth management. Develop policies regarding the coordination of regional infrastructure services and delivery, promote the economic wellbeing and competitiveness of the region and develop policies outlining how the board shall engage the public on the growth and servicing plan. So when it comes to decision-making, we really do strive for consensus-based decision-making that's based on understanding and respecting municipal perspectives, developing a shared value proposition and outcomes, evidence-based and data-driven decision-making, establishing task forces and working groups of municipal experts and enlisting subject matter experts from outside who have an interest in helping the region grow. The process of establishing consensus is one of the things that I find most interesting because it's really at the core of how we do our work. Decisions don't come to the board on a whim, for the most part. Sometimes they do, but for the most part they don't. Ideas and initiatives are traditionally sent through committees or task forces for further consideration before any decision is made. And it's through these committees and task forces and working groups where different perspectives are shared and where we get a better systems view of the matter at hand. Through this deliberative process, our members have an opportunity to share their local realities and influence work and refine their ideas in a way that benefits all member municipalities. But with anything, there's still room for improvement for our members to better understand one another's local realities and for, for, and, and that will help us um, at the core, focus on board development efforts. That said, we'll continue to strive for consensus and ultimately all decisions do come to the board, uh, and require a vote of the board. For a motion to pass at the board, it requires support of two-thirds of member municipalities representing two-thirds of the population. With respect to specific mandated duties in fulfilling.
Karen, if, if I could just ask a question, sorry, um, the bottom line, two-thirds, two-thirds. So does that mean that, um, essentially nothing could move forward without Edmonton, uh, voting on it? Because they, they would would, would all the other municipalities, just hypothetically, if, would they have two-thirds of the population? Without Edmonton, ever?
They, they would not.
Okay, so, so Edmonton always has to be on board with any of the decision-making then?
They do. And, and I think that's the beauty of the consensus based decis- consensus-based decision-making process. So in the three and a half years almost that I've been at the board, you know, we've never seen, in my opinion, when, when we're working on those big policy issues, the things that I have found to be most interesting is watching the, uh, subject matter experts from member municipalities really work hard to bring those local realities and those perspectives forward so that there's really great understanding among member municipalities. And so when things come to the board, when those really big policy decisions come to, come to the board, you know, it's quite incredible to see the, um, voting record of the board, which is, um, all almost always unanimous on those big, big issues, whether it be, um, the regional agriculture master plan or the integrated transportation master plan or, um, the shared investment for shared benefit or the MRSP, you know, it's quite, uh, amazing to watch that happen. And I think that, you know, just in there's, there's some really great work, um, underway right now that is being led by the, a CAO steering committee with technical experts related to ESG motions, in particular to climate change motions. And to watch the enthusiasm and expertise related to, um, to climate change motions in this region through member municipalities and the ability to bring that to the board to make best decisions, I think is, is really fantastic. And then board members are really learning about, um, how to bring those policies forward and, and sharing their, their viewpoints and their differences through different opinions through task forces where those local realities get shared and we really build in, uh, the ability for, I think, compromise and really strong outcomes. And I'm sure Mayor Heron would have, uh, things to add to, to that kind of.
But I want to, I want to add Karen, if you're okay. Um, the voting structure quite often comes up, like frequently. Um, and it gets criticized quite often that Edmonton has a veto. Um, I don't remember last term Mayor Eppson even voting once in a negative. Um, he, this, the big cities, they, they take that, that negative vote very seriously. But at the same time, it works both ways. So I can give you an example of at least one, because it was my motion, um, that failed, even though majority voted in favor of it. And that was, um, I wanted to establish the regional recovery task force. Remember that Karen? It was a seven to five vote, I think. Um, that, I can't remember. And so the majority voted in favor. But because there was, uh, we didn't get two-thirds. But because there was, uh, we didn't get two-thirds. So there was the five negative, so it works both ways. So Edmonton was completely in favor of that. Although it failed. So, um, it, it's a good voting structure. It actually is very balanced, um. And so you're gonna hear probably in the next four years, some criticism of the voting structure, but honestly, I, I highly. Believe it's the best way for a region like ours to before, when Edmonton is the biggest player in the room, they should be on side. Uh, but they were very cautious about vetoing anything. And I shouldn't even use the word veto, it's, it's not a veto, it's, it's, it's the two-thirds. I just want to add that Karen, I'm sorry.
No, and I think the thing that, that I would say is that, I would just say in your hearing that. In the past, Mayor Iverson did vote no, but he never voted no alone. Right? So, so Edmonton has never stood by itself alone. And because sometimes, sometimes member municipalities and sometimes the board does vote down motions or votes down. Uh, something that has come forward, like Mayor Heron has just pointed out. But what I would say is that, um, in those instances, um, in which. Uh, the city of Edmonton cast a no vote, they have never done it on. And I.
Yeah, thank, thanks for that discussion, yeah. Help, very helpful.
Okay, so I'm gonna move then to slide ten. Which just talks about the specific mandated duties of the board, which are to prepare the growth plan and, and the servicing plan. Advise and make recommendations to the minister on both of those plans. Facilitate resolutions and issues arising from the preparation and implementation of both of those plans. And to develop and implement policies for cost sharing for regional projects for the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. So those are the specific mandated duties of the board within, in the regulation. The next thing I'm going to talk about is the governance model. And, uh, so, so this is a little bit interesting as well. While board members are appointed by virtue of their election to their respective municipal council. When board members come around the table, come around the EMRB table. They are tasked with working in the best interest of the region. As a distinct and legal entity, the EMRB should not be viewed as another order of government. Or as an extension of each municipality, but rather as a regional body with a regional focus. A board member is not precluded from taking into account their municipality's best interests. Or making a decision or advancing a position that favors their municipality. So long as the municipality's best interests are not the exclusive consideration. And that the action is consistent with the region's best interest. And in, you know, I look at it and I, and I think to myself, the EMRB deserves the best efforts of all board members to make it work. With respect to roles and responsibilities of board members. Uh, consistent with the vision of the board to be a highly strategic and engaged board, the roles and responsibilities of the members include. Instilling that strategic focus and inspiring a compelling citizen-centric board vision. Fostering that effective interpersonal, inter- interpersonal relationships and, and working collaboratively with colleagues. Anticipating and actively participating in board debate and discussion. Developing a strong working knowledge of the EMRB's guiding documents, like the growth plan and the regulation. Keeping up to date and informed on issues and trends that may influence the region and may potentially impact the board. Reporting on activities to the board, um, of the board to respective municipal councils. And of course, representing the board, uh, at various events. With respect to budget and funding, the EMRB's, the EMRB's annual budget is approximately three point four million dollars. And this funding comes from two sources, the provincial government grants and member municipalities. Member municipalities' contributions are determined on an equitable proportion-based, uh, formula. And for the city of Saint Albert, uh, that contribution is just under ninety-seven thousand dollars per year. With respect to bringing value, growth really is about using our land. Growth management is about using our land wisely and protecting our quality of life and enhancing our, the prosperity of future generations. The EMRB's value to the region comes through focusing on issues that are regionally significant, such as climate change and protecting the. Environment, including air, water and biodiversity. Municipal services, including public safety, infrastructure, transportation choices and, and solid waste management. Agriculture, including stewarding, stewarding the land, ensuring local food supply and food security. And economic development, including things like broadband. The EMRB works to create conditions that set the stage for prosperity by enhancing investment readiness and setting the stage for economic development. Creating investor certainty through a clear, through clear and consistent regulatory and policy frameworks. And by creating operational efficiencies through reducing duplication within the region, providing one window access to the region. And leveraging economies of scale and shared resources. With respect to our growth plan, the growth plan is a future-focused thirty-year plan. For the region, representing our collective commitment to working together and growing responsibly to accommodate a projected one million additional residents. And an increase of four hundred and seventy-five thousand jobs over that next twenty-five or thirty years. And so I'd like to pause here and, and put that into a bit of perspective. So if we think about it today, where we are almost at one point three million citizens and we think about that. It has taken us this long in our history to come to one point three million citizens. And in the next thirty or thirty-five years, we project to add another million. That is putting that extra million people in in about a quarter of the time. In which we have grown to, to be the, the, um, population that we are today. And that's daunting, that's a daunting task. You know, I think about it and, and, and think about where are we going to put the solid waste of that another million people? How are we going to move the goods and services? Um, that are required to move throughout our region, how are we going to move the people through our region? You know, where will, where will they live and how will they live? They're not all going to live and choose to live in the same community. And I think we all need to think about how we're planning together and how we're going to accommodate both that population growth and that associated job growth. While we are being responsible stewards of our environment and thinking about, um, how we ensure future prosperity. The growth plan provides a comprehensive and integrated policy framework for managing growth. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach, but applies the same principles, strategies and objectives in a contextually sensitive manner. The growth plan is a holistic plan and includes six interconnected policy areas. Economic competitiveness and employment, natural living systems, communities and housing. Integration of land use and infrastructure, transportation systems and agriculture. Some of the quantifiable benefits of the growth plan are actually showing up here on the slide. With respect to, um, the, oh, sorry?
Yeah, sorry, just that question. With, with growth comes other. Um, social challenges, uh, homelessness, uh. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, all, all of those affordable housing type issues as well. Um, we, we talked about addressing the garbage, but how, it, it does. Does EMRB also have an area where they get into the, uh, addressing the, the social challenges that come with that growth?
So in, in particular, with respect to housing. Um, if, if you, um, take a look at, there's a, one of the six policy areas in the growth plan is communities and housing. And in the past, um, the EMRB has focused on housing. Um, different kinds of housing and housing gaps in the, uh, in the region. Um, there was a, a report that was published in two thousand and thirteen that I'll speak about in, in a little bit in, in the presentation. That, uh, was a focus of the EMRB, um, a past, the past board, uh, under the Capital Region Board. But in the last four years, um. It was, this board did not focus on housing. So the last, the last board from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one. Didn't, didn't undertake, um, housing as one of its strategic priorities. I think that as we look forward and as we move forward, you can already see the discussions that had started to take place. Uh, last April and May around, uh, around housing. And I think, uh, we'll have a strategic planning session, I believe it's in the calendar for February twenty-fifth, and I think it'll be at that time where we'll learn. You know, what are some of the key issues that this board feels are important? And, uh, whether or not housing, uh, will arise at that time, but it certainly is one of the six policy areas in the growth plan.
And Karen, I would also say that the focus on ESG, when, when they ask being social, I think, um, when we do the. What are we calling the brief look at the growth plan when we kind of do an, an update to it? I think probably Mike, you've pointed out something that was lacking for sure. Um, that we need to maybe focus on some of the more broader social issues beyond housing and, and transit. It could be, um, mental health addiction, because all those things are going to come with growth.
I have a couple of questions, um, the savings of land in the last slide there, can you describe that? And also in the, um, three point four million budget, is there a shared, um, you know? Um, advisory of what all that's spent on?
So I'll, I'll, I'll tackle that question first. Uh, there's an audit and finance committee. And, um, and the audit and finance committee approves the budget, uh, recommends the budget go to the board. So there's a, there's a very, it's a public process in which the board passes a budget and there's a breakdown of, of how all of that is spent. So for example, we are heading into, um. The five-year interim review of our growth plan. And so there's a specific amount of budgeted money in order to undertake that review, which is. I believe in the neighborhood of about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over three years. So there's a very, there's a, a specific budgeted process, there's an audit and finance committee that meets, uh, on a quarterly basis. Council Broadhead has been, um, the vice chair of that committee in the past. And so, um, it's my job as, uh, the CEO to bring that budget forward and present it to the board and, uh. And the board asks, uh, questions and, and, and really establishes the priorities. So the budget is based on, uh, the board's strategic plan and the strategic initiatives that the board identifies. And then, uh, we build a budget to, um, to move that forward.
Is a large portion of that on administration then?
Uh, there is, um, probably about. I'm thinking it is. A little over half would be on administration, might be, might be two-thirds. So, um, we do, are, we, we have a staff of about, uh, ten people. And, uh, and we do a lot of our work through, uh, task forces and working groups. So we engage member municipalities and, uh, subject matter experts to help us through, uh, consulting, consultants and so on.
Okay, thank you. And the savings of the land, the hundred and sixty kilometers squared there?
Right, so, um, the, that is the, that is the projected savings of the land upon the implementation of the growth plan. So when we talk about things like density targets, if we, if we, um. If we implement the growth plan like it is meant to be implemented, like it is visioned to be implemented. Then the savings of that land over the, over the life of the growth plan will be nearly a hundred and sixty-two. Uh, about a hundred and sixty-two square kilometers. And so I can't tell you right now, where is that land being saved? Um, what I can tell you is that as we go through the five-year interim review, we're doing some modeling that will tell us whether or not we're on target. For saving that land and where the, and where some of those savings will be. But that occurs, when you think about, like, if, if you look at what our growth has been traditionally over, over time. Without, um, the parameters of the growth plan and what it will be based on the implementation of the growth plan. Those are the projected savings over the life of the plan.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Somewhat, yes, thank you.
I'm happy to answer, I'm happy to, we can dive into that. There's, uh, the expertise behind that would truly come from Sharon Shuya. Uh, who has really led the development of that plan. I'm not going to pretend to be the expert on. How, how that, how those savings are, are, uh, recognized over that time. Sharon has done all of that work and led the development of the regional agriculture master plan. Happy to have, uh, her come and present on what that would look like.
Thank you for that as well.
Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the MRSP now, as we move forward through this part of the presentation. This is going to get into some of the specific things that we've done, um, in particular. Over the last, uh, term of the board with some things that came, uh, a little bit prior. So the MRSP supports the implementation of the growth plan by focusing on areas where we can realize efficiencies in planning for regionally significant services. Identifying and prioritizing regional infrastructure investment and identifying opportunities to coordinate delivery of services. The work under the MRSP recognizes the fiscal realities facing us all. And that the costs associated with providing infrastructure and efficient services. Um, now and for another million people and the associated growth in jobs will be greater than any one municipality can manage alone. It also recognizes that leveraging economies of scale and identifying opportunities to work together. Will benefit taxpayers across all of our member municipalities. The board has chosen to focus on four priority service areas that you see up on the screen. Solid waste, stormwater, fire, EMS and emergency management. The priority services areas were carefully chosen from a much broader list. And were determined to be those areas where the board could have the most impact. I'm gonna move next to the Integrated Regional Transportation Master Plan or IRTMP. The IRTMP lays the groundwork for how we can integrate and achieve greater efficiencies across our regional transportation network. The process undertaken for the development of the plan was evidence-based and optimizes regional networks. Reduces duplication in transportation planning and it prioritizes investments in critical transportation infrastructure. It also includes a model where you can, where one can input data to visualize different scenarios. This model can be used both regionally and sub-regionally. Alberta Transportation was a member of the IRTMP task force. And by working side by side on this new twenty-five-year plan for the region. We were able to look beyond just roads. We looked at multi-modal forms of transportation. And the transportation infrastructure hubs needed to better move goods and services and people. Because of the, because of this intergovernmental collaboration, Alberta Transportation has advised. That they are using the IRT, IRTMP as the foundation to build its own fifty-year plan for the region. And I just want to say that, uh, uh, Alberta Transportation will be coming to the board in February. To, um, to ask for the board to consider joint participation in the fifty-year regional plan. Another outcome of this joint, uh, planning process is the development of the annual transportation project prioritization list. This list uses a model based on data and evidence to help prioritize infrastructure. Investments that are regionally significant and that would bring the greatest benefit to the region, to citizens, businesses and the industry. This list is submitted yearly to the province and has grown to be an important input into the government of Alberta's. Uh, capital budget planning process on a yearly basis. The regional agriculture master plan or RAMP is a core piece of work to complete the growth plan and is awaiting approval by the province. Agriculture is recognized as Alberta's second-largest economic generator. And represent, and, and represents a huge, huge amount of land in this region. It is expected to lead our province's economic recovery and will contribute immensely to GDP growth. RAMP is the first ever regional plan to manage land use for the future of agriculture and the agriculture sector by ensuring producers and processors have room to grow. RAMP also included the development of the land evaluation and site assessment, or LEAS, tool for our region. A first such analysis to be completed on the prairies. LEAS is the tool that ensures that we have a rigorous process based on a consistent approach to identify areas of prime agricultural land for conservation. RAMP is about conserving prime agricultural lands and creating opportunities for value-added agriculture to grow. As a part of an economic imperative study that we commissioned, we learned. That there is incredible potential to create jobs and increase the region's economic prosperity by an estimated ten billion dollars. Supporting vibrant communities and economies. Seizing this economic imperative for diversification and growing value-added agriculture and agro-food sec- the agro-food sector is a massive opportunity for this region. Um, I'm gonna move on now to the shared investment for shared benefit and regional broadband work that was done, uh, this year as well. SISB is an invest, is. S I S B is an invest, is is an investment evaluation framework and model for quantifying and qualifying regionally significant investment opportunities through the sharing of costs, which may include resource, land, data and expertise, among other assets, and of course, the sharing of benefits. The S I S B supports the work of the board by enhancing economic competitiveness of the region and by providing opportunities to increase and enhance regional collaboration that that could include other orders of government, regional stakeholders and private investors. In two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, the board also undertook a comprehensive environmental stand scan on the state of broadband in the region. Investing in critical infrastructure in the form of high speed internet is essential to ensure our region is recognized as globally economically competitive to attract investment, business and talent, and is critical to ensuring a high quality of life and equal opportunity for all of our residents. And I know that as we continue to move through this pandemic, we all recognize the importance of that, both in a, in a rural and an urban setting. The import, the report identified issues of accessibility and connectivity throughout the region and builds the case for addressing these gaps as a priority. The report highlighted broadband as an essential service and quantified the economic benefit associated with addressing critical gaps regardless of where citizens live and work in the region. Through the report has caught the attention of national and international private investors because truly it's the first time we've had data like this for the region. Um, and you know, it it's interesting to me, we that that report certainly has attracted some great attention and just recently Rogers through its merger with Shaw has taken a significant interest in investing in this region. They are looking at both investment in urban and rural structures and we're here over two days to to meet with and representatives of our region and businesses and look to see how they might be a part of solutions in this region. So next we'll just talk briefly again about housing diversity. And and as we said, I won't spend long on this because we've talked on this. Uh, our priorities aren't static and these have changed over time with the board. But as I did mention, in two thousand and thirteen, the board released our affordable future that talked about housing choices in the region and looked at better understanding supply and demand gap. It found that housing choices were somewhat limited and did not address the diversity of housing need, housing needed today and in the future and proposed a number of plans and frameworks. And based on the discussions as Mayor Heron indicated prior to the election related to E S G and in particular the S of the social implications, I do expect to see that this board will talk about that at future strategic sessions. I'll speak briefly about the Regional Evaluation Framework or the R A F, which is the board's mechanism to ensure municipal planning is consistent with the growth plan. The growth plan recognizes member municipalities are unique and have different planning frameworks and policies to implement the pro, the growth plan at a local level. R A F takes into consideration the uniqueness of each municipality and allows flexibility in how members approach implementation while ensuring municipal statutory planning adequately aligns with the principles and policies of the growth plan. I'm going to move and talk on and move on and talk just a little bit about G I S and and K P I's. Uh, the board has also undertaken a re, a regional geographic information services or E M R G S uh, initiative, which was first approved by the board all the way back in two thousand and nine and enables improved collection and maintenance of share and sharing of regionally significant data between member municipalities. It supports regional decision making and aims to expand the regional capacity to deliver this kind of information and support sustainable land use, public transit and housing decisions through the collaboration of the board and its members. With respect to key performance indicators, when the region's growth plan was approved, it included twenty six unique key performance indicators to keep our growth on track and ensure our regional planning process is responsive to our changing realities. These K P I's are aligned to the outcomes of the growth plan and the six policy areas that I previously mentioned. The majority of the K P I's actually rely on data from the federal census and will be using, will be assessing these K P I's as a part of the five year interim review of the growth plan, which will be undertaking over the next two years. And once we do that, we'll get a better sense of whether or not we're on track with with those projected savings like those land use savings that we're talking about or whether we need to pivot and adjust based on what we find through through the data, through the census. The other, the other thing that I just wanted to talk about is that, you know, we really E M R B and 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 its predecessor, the Capital Region Board, has really provided an incubation space for some of the other true regional initiatives that are underway. And those include Edmonton Global and the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission. I think that, you know, what I've seen in my last three and a half years with the board is that there are really rich and dynamic conversations that I talked about previously that happened at this board and allow for the incubation of these initiatives and undertakings that really truly do benefit our region. And it's, it's, you know, there's a point of pride when we've recently presented to the Winnipeg Metropolitan Region, they've taken a real interest in us. Their provincial government has mandated that they also develop a growth plan. And just before the pandemic, they brought their entire team and members of the province to spend two days with us to learn how we had developed the growth plan and and what some of the outcomes were. Um, I also recently did a presentation in Toronto around the same. How how are we, what is, what, what do we think is is the key to some of our successes and what are some of the key learnings that we've had? So moving forward, I just want to talk really quickly about the new plan that was approved in April of twenty twenty one and, you know, Mayor Heron can certainly speak to this as well. Um, I think what you'll have seen throughout this presentation and what I hope you've seen is that our work is legacy work. This work is work that looks out twenty five and thirty years. And when you think about the kind of growth that's going to take place in this region, it's not growth that you can plan for twenty five years from now. That's when it's too late. We have to be thinking about how we are going to grow and how we manage that growth and all of those services and that infrastructure uh, that's going to have to be built up around to support our citizens and ensure future prosperity. And so with that, uh, last year, the board approved a strategic plan, a region by design. And this plan sets a new foundation and framework for determining our strategic direction and focuses on three key priorities. Before I get into those priorities, what I will also say is is that the board really did conclude as it did this work that strategic planning is not a one and done type of initiative. Don't do a strategic plan and and let it sit on the shelf for four years. We're in a dynamic situation and a dynamic environment and on a yearly basis, we'll look at that and assess, are we headed in the right direction and are we meeting our strategic vision? So within that new strategic plan, there were three key priority areas. The first priority area was in this enabling responsible growth across the region where we have committed to develop and implement the holistic growth and servicing plans to achieve that fifty year vision that will attract and retain investment and talent, ensure sustainability, enhance efficiencies, seed economic development and elevate the quality of life for citizens across our region. The second is committing to E S G practices and policies where we have undertaken the intentional step to embed an environmental, social and governance lens in the plans, policies and practices guiding the work of the board to meet the triple bottom line and ensure sustainable communities and future generations. And that's really yet to be defined. So that will be part of the work of this board is, you know, how will they? How will they implement that lens? What will that look like? I did mention that there was a motion that came forward to the board in in June that was passed that is looking at two climate change initiatives right now that will come back to the board for consideration, either in April or in June of this year. And the third is to collaborate to enhance outcomes across the region. We seek to focus on opportunities that will leverage economies of scale, find efficiencies and enable member municipalities to work smarter together. And of course, to engage key regional partners, both traditional and both traditional and non traditional stakeholders. So really what this means is that this board has a great foundation for which it will start its work and continue on the path of implementation of both the growth and and the servicing plans. And it will be up to this board to set its vision for the next, for the next four years. So I'll stop there. I know that's a lot of information, some of it dry, some of it really, I think, very interesting. And with that, I'm happy to take any other questions and and certainly I know councillors Mackay and Broadhead have participated around the table and Mayor Heron, of course, so I I know you'll have lots to add.
Karen, Ken Mackay here. You you mentioned the strategic planning and I'm glad you got to that. And I understand that there's a special workshop, it's February twenty fifth, I just looked in the calendar. Um, and I realized the need that you don't want to get it too big because obviously that doesn't function well if you're trying to focus. But are alternates going to be invited to that? Have any consideration been given to that so that there's some synergy between alternates and and the actual mayors?
You know, I haven't thought about that, to be quite honest, but it's something that I can certainly raise with the with the board chair.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I'll I'll email William.
Sure.
I think that might be a good idea, Karen. I mean, especially for the next two years, my presence on the board is going to be very sketchy and Ken will probably be there a lot. Already in February, I can't come, so the twenty fifth, I can come, but for the regular board meeting, so if that could be included. Because, you know, one of the things that I've always loved about C R B and then E M R B is when I was first elected in ten, I just started going, I went to almost every meeting and then I got on to be on the Affordable Futures Committee Report and then the growth plan as a councillor. And I think that is hugely beneficial. So if any, any of this council wants to come and sit, the the meetings are public. Um, and I I encourage you to sit there. There's always regional councillors sitting there paying attention. You get to really network when they're in person, et cetera. It's too bad we had to cancel the thing on January twenty first. Well, sorry, thank thankfully we're postponing it and not canceling it. Yeah. But yeah, I would encourage everyone to attend.
So I think I I wouldn't mind just talking about January twenty first for a minute, if that's okay. What what we, what you should have all had in your, in your calendars for the twenty first was an invitation to a welcome to the region and a, and a region one on one event. And it's a day long event and I think it's actually, it's very important because it's really the opportunity for us to focus on and learn about each other and the role of the board and and the collective opportunity and potential, which is so tremendous in this region. And we we postponed it because it really doesn't work if you don't do it in person. And part of what we're going to do this year is talk about each other's municipal realities, member municipal realities. Because a lot of times we assume we know our neighbors and that we understand them and that we know what's happening in the other municipalities in the region, but we don't always. And I think to have all of us sit together and to learn a little bit more about that and understand that will be truly, truly valuable. And I know the board undertook that exercise when we were starting the Shared Investment for Shared Benefit Initiative. And to this day talks about the value of learning more about um, the challenges of member municipalities in the region, but also those key opportunities and the vision that each has for its own future. And 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 how that all comes together and what that means for a complete, a complete community and a complete region.
I have a few questions. I don't want to spend your time too much, but I actually have three questions. There's the, there was twenty six members initially and you're down to thirteen. Was that to keep it more of a city type board? Or why was that number decreased?
So it went from twenty four to thirteen and I think, you know, there are those that are around the table and I'm sure Mayor Heron can speak to this as well. It it predates my time at the board when that happened, but initially, when there were twenty four member municipalities, it was everyone from the largest municipality, which was, of course, the city of Edmonton, to include some of the smallest villages. Uh, and there was a huge difference in in issues that were faced and ability and and really, I think, what it meant for participation among board, among members at the board, those member municipalities and what the contributions look like. And I, when I say that, I don't mean financial, I mean, you know, what did it mean for member, for member municipalities to be at the board and to undertake the work of the board within the mandate? And so when the province looked at this and and when the board itself looked at it, they they thought that the minimum population should be five thousand or more to be at the table. It it's, you know, it's a little bit more substantive. It allows those member municipalities to fully participate in more fully participate in the work of the board. And and it's not, I wouldn't call it city, right? Because there are four counties and three towns. Um, so it's not necessarily that, it's just, it's more around capacity and ability to actually implement and participate in the work of the board. Mayor Heron, I don't know if you have other comments on that?
Well, a lot of that downsizing came through the growth plan. So we lost completely Lamont, the county of Lamont, and is that right? Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and then the towns of Redwater, Legale, Gibbons. I'm missing one, Bonacord. Were lost because their population was low, but they still live within the county of Surgeon, so they they are still, you know, essentially part of the Edmonton regional context and they are brought into the fold through Alana and myself, we meet with them all the time. So, yeah, it was just about keeping the board a little bit more manageable and just making sure the context was was appropriate. Those small, those small towns and villages were struggling. Um, those were long drives for them to get to the board meetings and and it was, it was kind of unruly at twenty four. And we also lost New Sirepta because they dissolved into the Duke County or is that Strathcona, I can't remember, because they just dissolved. So, yeah, it was, it's just been a process. The thirteen members of the E M R B is much more productive.
And one other mention, the emergency management, like it's been contentious for a number of years through this board kind of thing, like a lot of people would see that, you know, ambulance systems and fire are somewhat failing at this time. So is that a discussion going forward? And also the broadband was mentioned through the province. So was it directed, is it a parallel that you're working with the province or is the province doing more rural and and the E M R B is focusing the city development?
So I'll start with the emergency management and and fire EMS. So when, with respect to the Metropolitan Region Servicing Plan, there are four areas, as was mentioned, for for work to, for us to take a look at and and do some work together. Within those, there are four collaboratives that are set up. So that means that there are subject matter experts from each member municipality that sit on those collaboratives and look at ways in which we can find efficiencies or reduce duplication or or identify initiatives that we might all undertake together. Some of it is really about simply starting to collect data. Because because I will tell you that oftentimes we think that we have the information needed to make really smart decisions regionally, but we don't actually have the data available. So some of it is is simply starting to collect data and evidence and learn and understand best practices for the region so that we can just be better together. With respect to fire and EMS, those two collaboratives have not, fire EMS and emergency management, those two collaboratives haven't been stood up yet. We've been staggering them, staggering how we stand them up. Because I think the one thing that we all have to remember and that I often remind everyone is my team is ten in total, including me right now. And so this is a huge mandate and there's a huge amount of work that is undertaken. And so we have to, we watch to make sure that we, the burden of the amount of work, work isn't too much on our member municipalities and isn't also too much on board members and the administration. So we're working our way through standing those up. Councillor Mackay was sitting previously as a representative on the Metropolitan Region Servicing Plan Standing Committee, which oversees the implementation of that plan. And so we will get to fire EMS and and emergency management and those, how we start to tackle those issues will come from those subject matter experts around the table. how we start to tackle those issues will come from those subject matter experts around the table. So right now, that isn't underway. It will, it will emerge over the next, I suspect, 18 months to two years. And really also the CAOs in the region have some great insight to offer on how we can maximize some of the things we might do with fire EMS. So for example, we're not looking at, we're not having a conversation about a regional EMS or a regional fire service. Conversations that we might have might be around joint training or procurement, joint purchasing, so that we are, we are finding ways to save money. But you know, those, those conversations are, it's really about how do we build momentum around the things that we do together, find those efficiencies and make sure that we're not biting off more than we can chew, given the, the resources that we put towards the work of the board. And I can't, I can't recall if you had another question. Oh, broadband. So with respect to broadband, work of the board in 2019 and 20 was really to undertake the comprehensive study to say what is going on in this region with respect to digital infrastructure. And you know, it was, that was truly supported as well by Edmonton Global because what we know in this region is that you can stand on a hill and see the downtown of Edmonton and have no service, which means you have no opportunity for economic development, which means families have no opportunity to be connected. People can't stay in their homes. I mean, there's just huge gaps in service throughout this region. And, and so we talk about service gaps in terms of connectivity, but it's also capacity related. And so capacity is often an issue in urban municipalities. And you know, that was one of the things that I learned early on and certainly, you know, I recall a conversation with the city of Spuce Grove, talking about the fact that, you know, the capacity, the, the demand for high-speed internet and the capacity that they actually were able, that they had at their disposal didn't meet. They weren't aligned. And so really, this has been an ongoing issue for some time. And so what we did was took, took the time to actually say, what is happening in this region? Where are, where are their service gaps in both connectivity and capacity? And, and, and really truly think about how do we deliver regional broadband in, in digital infrastructure throughout this region to ensure that every citizen has access, can be educated, can access healthcare, can be connected, can have their business function. And, and the work with the province, the province was actually a stakeholder in the work that we did because they didn't have the data that we had, that we aligned. And so they came to the table, the federal government came to the table. And now we continue to work with them. We're having conversations with AUME and RME about ongoing investment opportunities in this region, ongoing conversations with Edmonton Global. And like I mentioned, private, national and international investors have been attracted to this region because for the first time, you know, Rogers was here and they said, we can't believe that you have all this information. Here it is for these 13 municipalities and we can make smart decisions on where to best add to infrastructure to make sure that we're building onto the system. And so that's the work really of broadband. We are not, we are not a provider. We are simply a conduit to help people to help build out that digital infrastructure and make sure that we have an opportunity to enhance people's lives and, and make sure that we have the kind of economic development opportunities and investment opportunities readily available for those investors who are in, looking in this region.
Thank you.
Things like agriculture, right? Like precision-based agriculture now requires broadband on those farms. It's, it's, it is something that is really holding us back and it's something that this board focused on and it has been a, a huge reward for the investment that we made in that report.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
9:30. We're supposed to take a break. Is there any more quick questions for Karen? Karen, are you sticking around for what's next on our agenda?
I, I'll turn my camera off, but I'll be here. I don't want to, I don't want to intrude. I, I do want to say thank you for the time this morning and I hope that I know that this was fast. There's so much to learn about the work of EMRB. It's, it's really big work. This is, this is the work that creates the conditions for success of this region. And you know, I think that when I look at it and I think this is game-changing legacy work and it's what attracted me to this board in the first place, I hope that you find an opportunity to join us at a meeting or participate in subsequent task forces or opportunities. As Mayor Heron said, it's, I think it's, it's extremely valuable and it requires us now to sort out and plan for the future. And so I'd love to see you more often and welcome you to the table at any time. So thanks very much for your time today and, and I look forward to meeting you all in person again soon.
And though to doodle pull fast so we can get that new day for the meet and greet for the region in our calendars, because that'll be fun. Because the more you put into this board, the more you get out. Right? You know, the more you attend, the more committees you get on. It's, it's good. So thank you so much, Karen, for, for joining us. 9:32, so we're supposed to be back according to my calendar at 9:45? Yes, for the EMTS stuff. And then you know what, Wes, I'll turn it over to you for introductions in that one, okay? All right. So you guys in.
Fair enough.
In 15.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Gary.
Hey, we're back. Wes, you want to take it over?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And good morning again to council and Madam Mayor has given me the privilege, Paul, of introducing you to our council here. And so to that end, let me introduce to council Mr. Paul Jankowski, our Chief Administrative Officer, Chief Executive Officer for the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Service Commission. Paul joined us last May, I believe. And we've been working him to the bone ever since. So thank you, Paul, for coming and taking the opportunity to, to brief council on, on the commission, where it's at and where it's going. And so as we did on the, on the previous presentation by Karen and the MRBL, just ask council members to introduce themselves. Mike, you're at the top. Why don't you just start?
Morning, Paul. Thanks for joining us today and not having a virtual meeting where we don't have to start up our cars. Thanks for joining us today and not having your virtual meeting where we don't have to start up our cars in this cold weather. Probably a good thing. I'm new city councillor, so I'm very interested to listen and learn from your presentation today.
Good morning.
Good morning, Paul. Shelley Birmansky here, new city councillor as well. Nice to meet you.
Good morning.
Natalie.
Natalie Jolly is my second term, so Wes has certainly kept me up to date on what's going on with with the commission over the last four years.
Good morning.
I believe Ken is on his phone, probably voice only at this point in time. I'm not sure whether he'll be able to chime in or not.
Oh, I can always chime in. That's one of my strengths. So thanks, Paul. And Ken Mekai, I'm a second term councillor.
Good morning, councillor.
Madam Mayor, over to you.
I do see that councillor Hughes is with us now.
Ah, good morning, councillor Hughes.
Hi there. Yeah, I'm on the third term and I'm actually looking forward to seeing this. We haven't had any other updates from you guys that I'm aware of, so this I'm definitely going to be interested in hearing. That's it. Thanks.
Morning.
And well, I'm Kathy here. And nice to see you again.
Thank you. Yes, nice to see you. Thank you.
Over to you then, Paul.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chair Broadhead and Madam Mayor and members of council. Really appreciate this opportunity to come forward and to give you a bit of an update. And I guess it's the first update, as councillor Hughes pointed out, with regards to the work that we've been carrying on and that we propose to continue with over the course of 2022. With me today, I do have two key members of our staff, our very small staff. And you'll hear many of the same themes that Karen spoke about. You'll hear them sort of reiterated and reinforced in our presentation today. We are small, but we are mighty. As councillor Broadhead or Chair Broadhead indicated, I came on board in May of last year, and since that time, we have grown to a staff of five. So we're at a point now where we're continuing that growth, and I'll speak to that throughout my presentation. But with me, I do have Brian Bechtel, who was our director of stakeholder relations. Brian was the second employee that joined us. And Brian and his communications team have been involved in terms of preparing not only for this presentation, because this is the first first presentation to our member municipal councils, but also involved in the preparation of what we what we're going to be delivering for all of our member municipalities over the coming month or so. And with Brian, we also have Sean Platt. Sean is on our communications team, and Sean will be running the presentation, provided that we have no technical glitches. Sean is the one that will ensure we have no technical glitches. So I'm very, very excited to be able to come forward and to provide St. Albert Council with a bit of an overview. St. Albert, as many of you are aware, has been instrumental in the growth or in the birth, the the culmination in creation of this commission. So if I can pop up Sean, the presentation at this point, that would be great. Do you want to? Perfect. So we've taken to and Karen spoke to the the sum being greater than the the addition of all its parts. We have started to speak about our endeavor as the one solution for the communities that make up the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission. We are the one bus service solution, and I'll speak to that throughout the presentation. Today, I'll speak about a little bit about our past history, how we got to where we are. I'll speak to the current membership of the EMTSC. I'll speak to the mandate that has been now enshrined or put in place by provincial regulation and also by the partnership that has resulted from the coordination and the agreement for the eight member municipalities to work together. I'll speak about our planning for delivery of the regional transit component as well as our administration of the local services that have both been worked into the mandate of this organization. What is missing from this outline, but what else takes some time to brief members of council about is our work plan for 2022. And as part of that discussion, I will also address the issue of sustainable transit funding and how we believe that as an organization made up of the constituent municipalities, how we are a much stronger entity in terms of establishing perhaps a new financial framework for integrated regional transit services in the future. So that's a brief outline of the presentation, but as I said, I will start with a discussion about our past history. I did allude to the fact that St. Albert and Edmonton in particular have been instrumental in moving towards this idea of integrated regional transit. And it's got the the idea itself has got a long history. It's been talked about in the Edmonton region for a couple of decades, but really in the last decade, it's when it started, the idea started to get real legs. Through much of the work of and Karen spoke a little bit to it, the EMRB and its predecessor, the CRB, the idea of an integrated transit system that would benefit all of the municipalities of the capital region came into being. And in 2016, really, I'll probably start there. 2016, St. Albert and Edmonton, your council, your preceding council, your mayors decided to get together and to really start advocating for this idea of working together to to create an integrated transit solution. That culminated ultimately after met much discussion, and I wasn't privy to a lot of it, but certainly councillor Broadhead and Mayor Heron have participated in that in the past. That culminated in the the receipt of or the commitment of the government of Alberta's funding of $3.7 million to really more robustly explore this potential and to build a business case, that money being dedicated to this endeavor in 2018. In 2018, at the same time, and councillor Birmansky, you spoke to the fact that at one point there was a different constituency of the CRB. At that point in 2018, there were 13 municipalities that did agree to work together to pursue the development of a business case by signing a memorandum of understanding. And over the course of the years, 18 to 2020, there was a lot of work done, funded largely by that government of Alberta grant. Work done to really put together a robust business case that was published in January of 2020, was brought forward to the 13 constituent municipalities at that time, and was in fact endorsed as a way to move forward by eight of those municipalities, resulting in an addendum to that business case being finalized in June of 2020, and ultimately resulting in the application of those eight municipalities to the provincial government for the creation of a new regional services commission. That permission from the provincial government, that regulation was passed late January of 2021. We're coming on the one year anniversary of that that regulation being passed. And that resulted then in the inaugural meeting of the Board of Directors in February of 2021. And as Chair Broadhead, as councillor Broadhead indicated, that then resulted in us starting to build the organization, and I'll speak to that a lot more in the coming slides. So moving forward, then, the idea was, and again, it's a similar theme to what was enforced or what was discussed through the previous presentation. It was this idea of shared investment for shared benefit. This idea of combining the the administration of the various transit systems that were being operated in a number of the eight municipalities with admittedly a desire to get transit services in a couple of them where transit did not exist. But this idea of combining their resources in order to better administer and gain some of those financial efficiency advantages to reduce duplication. And the business case really provided or documented the evidence that transit services can be delivered more efficiently. And that's our our theme number one and can provide ultimately a better level of service that will benefit all of the member communities as we move forward. So moving on then, speaking about the member communities, it is really you and seven other municipalities have have decided to work together. You and seven municipalities own the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission. And I recognize, everybody recognizes that that moniker is a mouthful. I will touch on that that point a little bit later in my presentation. But the board of the organization of the commission is composed of elected members from each of the eight municipalities. So councillor Broadhead is our chair and very happy to continue working with Chair Broadhead in that capacity. Since you, as council nominated or confirmed councillor Broadhead's appointment to our board, what happened thereafter was there was a nomination and an election process at the board. And councillor Broadhead was named again the chair of the the commission for the next next four years. So with that, the other members of the board, the vice chair of the board comes from the city of Le Dook. Councillor Glenn Finstad is now the vice chair of the board. The other key members are councillor Andrew Knack from the city of Edmonton, councillor Gord Harris from the from the city of Fort Saskatchewan. Councillor Harris is also the chair of our Human Resources and Compensation Committee. Councillor Justin Laurie from the town of Stony Plain continues as the chair of our Audit and Finance Committee. Councillor Stuart Houston from the city of Spruce Grove is a new member of this this commission. Councillor Sam Monkoff Swain from the city of Beaumont continues as a board member. And Mayor Jeff Craddock is the other new member of the the commission's board moving forward. In sum, these eight municipalities are the EMTSC. And the city of St. Albert continues to play through the chairmanship with councillor Broadhead, continues to play a key role in shaping where this organization is going to go over the next months and years. Moving forward then to the mandate of this organization, the mandate reflects many of the themes, as I said, that were presented in Karen's presentation with regards to overall coordination of regional objectives in the Edmonton metropolitan area. We truly believe and we've we've identified that our one solution is vital for regional success in many of the areas that Karen spoke to. Karen spoke to the ESG priorities and policies, environmental, social, and governance. We too have a number of key focal areas as we move forward. We continue to to believe and and we were convinced that in order to help rebound or rebuild the economic strength of the Edmonton metropolitan region, regional transit service will play a key role in that. We've certainly had a number of discussions with leaders in our business communities. There is an unabated and growing hunger for coordinated regional transit services in order to meet the economic needs of many of our employers in these in these areas. They need to be able to efficiently get employees from various places that they reside in across the metropolitan region to the employment areas. And while admittedly, and I'll speak to this in in the coming slides, while admittedly, traditionally, there have been four major destinations for transit ridership in the metropolitan area. There are growing needs to service other employment sectors, other employment zones that are growing across the capital region. By providing a better transit service, an integrated transit service, we will help achieve some many of those environmental objectives that Karen spoke to as well. We can be a champion for getting people out of their cars. We will be a champion for getting people out of vehicles and into more environmentally sustainable forms of transportation. The city of Edmonton and the surrounding municipalities, they've all done a great job in terms of the initial steps in that regard. We can continue to move that ball forward. The cost of transit, that that is a fundamental reason why this agency was created, why this commission was created. I'll speak to that in the coming two slides. But the efficiency argument that was so eloquently expressed in the earlier presentation, that is one of the two primary drivers for the creation and one of the two primary areas that are reflected in our mandate. Last but not least, and we've heard this through some of the initial survey work that we've carried out across the eight member municipalities, there continues to be and there is a growing hunger for people to engage socially. And a lot of people, a lot of the people that were surveyed, we surveyed 1,200 people. A lot of them express the fact that through better transit connectivity in the future, that will play a role in terms of building social connectivity as well. And I heard some of that mentioned, you know, the the social aspects, the need to meet social needs. I heard some of that mentioned in the earlier presentation or comments with regards to the earlier presentation as well. So moving on then, our two key focal areas reflect the efficiency with which an integrated transit service can can deliver the the trans on the bus transit needs. And I do want to just to clearly state that because some new members of council may not have kind of heard about the fact that what this is really focused on is the bus transit needs of the metropolitan region. It clearly, the mandate, the the governance bylaw and all of the documentation has clearly expressed that this at this point in time, this commission is not responsible for rail-based transit, but it is focused on integrating the bus transit services that exist across the the existing municipalities and will be expanded to serve all eight municipalities. I won't spend much more time belaboring this slide, but the other slide is speaks to the long-term objective. The next slide, slide number eight, speaks to the long-term objectives of ensuring that we meet the growing needs of the populations of both the businesses and the residents of the eight member municipalities. We, in the fullness of time, through the integration of these transit services, we will be able to improve the service delivery. We'll be able to improve the level of service that is afforded. That is a medium to long-term objective, and I'm going to stress that. Our current challenges reflect the challenges that all of the transit operators face across Canada and across North America right now. It's no secret, I'm sure, to the the council of city of St. Albert that transit ridership across North America and across your service, transit ridership has significantly been impacted by COVID. Our first challenge is to put in place an opening day network, and I'll speak to that a little bit more, an opening day network that reflects today's current fiscal and ridership demands and ultimately seek to build on that to provide a higher level of service to all of the eight member municipalities. I'm going to speak next in terms of the the two types of service that we are preparing to deliver in 2023. The first is the regional service to serve the intermunicipal transit ridership needs. And the second is the local service. And I'm going to speak to both of those in in sequence, and I'm going to make a distinction between those two because we're really planning those two differently. The Karen Witjak spoke to the fact that last year, there was the Integrated Regional Transit Transportation Master Plan. I keep wanting to call it the Transit Master Plan, but it's the Transportation Master Plan. And it it reflects both the long-term road capacity needs and road needs, road investment needs that need to be put in place, but also the the transit investment needs that that need to be put in place. It, however, focuses largely on the capital funding investment that is required. We, as an operator, are focusing on making the operations, on building an operational team and an operational approach that maximizes efficiency and allows us to minimize the cost to its eight member municipalities. Our vision is informed, the IRTMP vision is informed by the work that that we do here at the EMTSC. And the next slide really reflects some of the findings that we are going to be integrating into our thinking as we build this regional service. I mentioned that we carried out some initial survey work in the summer of 2021. And the first three bullet points are the were sort of the key findings that came out of that. There is a growing constituency across our eight municipalities that believe that public transit is valuable to their municipality, is valuable to their existence and their future as we we build into the as we build the system. There is, however, a concern particularly within those municipalities around Edmonton. There is a concern because many of the people in those communities believed at the time of the survey that public transit is valuable today in terms of the the contribution to their municipality. There is also a a certain percentage, one in five, think that public transit is efficient. But what that the flip side of that is that there is a lot of concern that there are a lot of people that believe that efficiency can be increased. And that really comes back to one of the two key raison d'etre and and reasons to create this commission. The fourth bullet point is just a typo. It reiterates bullet point number two. It's not intended for emphasis. It is just we made a mistake as we were preparing this slide. So thinking about the intermunicipal or the regional service, moving on to the next slide. Historically, much of the demand for intermunicipal service has really existed between the surrounding municipalities around Edmonton and four key destination points within the city of Edmonton. Those four key points resulting in the highest ridership demand were the downtown business area, the government government services area, as well as the three post-secondary institutions. So prior to COVID, that is where the demand was highest. That is where people from the surrounding eight municipalities, I'm sure you've heard this, members of council with regards to your constituencies in St Albert, those were the four key destinations. And as we seek to rebuild intermunicipal or regional transit services, as we seek to recover intermunicipal ridership, those will be the key four areas that we're going to focus on immediately. That does not, however, indicate that we will be ignoring the other transit demands that were identified both in the business case and that we've heard about loud and clear over the last year as we started our outreach to many members of the business community. There continues to be a desire, and it's a growing desire, to also have intermunicipal transit connectivity between some of the municipalities outside of Edmonton. And those smaller lines that are conceptually depicted in this diagram, those thinner lines connecting the municipalities between or outside of Edmonton, that is a demand that we'll be building a service plan to address, if not initially, at least recognizing that those demands will grow. And we will continue to address those demands and and increase our focus on those demands as the demands grow. Those employment areas that are growing that I spoke about a little bit earlier, many of those employment areas that are now emerging are employment areas outside of the city of Edmonton boundaries. They demand the transportation of employees to those locations, whether they be from the surrounding communities or within the surrounding communities or from within the city of Edmonton out to those employment zones and back again. So those are the key areas that we're going to be thinking about as we develop the opening day service plan for the intermunicipal component of the services. I do want to talk a little bit more about.
Paul?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question here?
Sure.
I certainly understand the the university and Nate will probably recover, you know, in after post-COVID, all this other garbage that's going on. You know, students will want to get back to to the classrooms. Probably government will recover to some degree. But I'm certainly seeing lots of material, written material and expert comments that, you know, businesses may choose to economically, environmentally, socially continue, you know, to work from home, even in a post-COVID scenario. People, over two years, people have have got used to it. They built home offices, they increased their internet capacity, you know, all of those things. Business processes have changed dramatically. Do you do you think there's really still going to be the four centers of of transportation? Or will it kind of boil down to just three of them? And the downtown area is not, you know, there's huge amounts of vacant real estate there. Do you think that'll ever recover?
So that that you you're raising a question that all transit agencies across transit operators across North America are grappling with right now. There is absolutely no question. You're absolutely correct. Typically, those downtown business areas, the downtown business cores, the office component of those has been the 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 one area that has been most impacted. And as a result, the transit ridership that has largely been focused in many urbanized areas, concentrating on those those traditional markets, that transit ridership is the the ridership that has most greatly diminished over the course of the last two years. There is, it it really depends on who you talk to. There are there are experts on both side of the spec, both sides of the spectrum. There, if you speak to many of the office lease type of companies, they what they experienced and and there was a study that was published, for example, in the downtown Toronto area late last year, they started seeing a recovery of the demand for office space towards the 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 fall of 2021 before the the second and third waves started coming in. So they started seeing some demand materializing. I think realistically, what we've got to do is we've got to plan for the worst, but be prepared for the best or vice versa, depending on on which way you look at it. So our our approach right now is to recognize that prior to COVID, there was a high demand focused on that office, office area, office employment area. I think a substantial portion of that will recover. It it is not likely to be the same as it was prior to 2020. I don't think many things are going to be the same as they were prior to to 2020. But there's certainly going to be an element of that segment that is going to to continue. So we continue to plan for that, but we're planning with all of your land use planning folks in all eight municipalities. What we're working with is all of the people that are administering transit today in the six municipalities that are that are delivering transit services. We're monitoring where the ridership trends go. There there was a modest recovery, for example, in Edmonton in September of last year before the subsequent waves did did hit. There was a significant bump up in ridership, again, destined to many of those traditional areas downtown and those three main destinations for post-secondary education. So the answer, that's a long way for me to say, we we're we're planning for a a substantial recovery in those areas. We will have to wait to see how 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 long it takes, whether it comes back 100% or whether there is a a more modest and a slower recovery of transit to those areas and whether the demands shift actually by virtue of the fact that, as you pointed out councillor, many people are now starting to work from home. Will there be an increased demand for local transit within the communities outside of Edmonton or even within Edmonton? And that really brings me to the next point. Our planning for the local ridership really will focus on working with the municipalities to identify what are the right levels of local ridership. If in fact, we do see that there are that there is more demand locally because people are working more from home, they're starting to concentrate on getting their kids from the house to the the the, you know, the various activities in their local municipality as opposed to traveling intermunicipally. We will be working with each one of the municipalities to help define the local service levels. And in that way, we'll be adjusting our overall service plan to reflect some of those changes. Does that kind of answer your question councillor?
I gotta get off mute there and say yes. Thank you.
Yeah, so and and maybe I'll expand on that just a little bit. In the original cost-sharing discussions that were that really formed, were were informed by the business case and were enshrined both through the governance bylaw, well, actually principally through the governance bylaw for the commission. There was a clear distinction in terms of the local service that would be delivered under the EMTSC banner and the intermunicipal service when it came, when it comes to the funding for those services. What the 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 proposed cost-sharing formula addressed was that the by virtue of the fact that the local services would be funded wholly or 100% by each local municipality, there will be a great, much greater degree of inter of of working together, if I can put it that way, for determining service levels, the right levels of service. Because at the end of the day, the city of St Albert, for example, will be paying or will be funding the delivery of local services in St Albert. And so the there's a, in in some ways, there's a safer pay for say, if I can put it that way. We will be working with your land use planners, we will be working with your operations people to continue to determine what are the emerging trends that you're seeing in the city of St Albert with regards to the demand for transit ridership? Where is it that you're going to be wanting a higher degree of service to reflect your constituencies? To reflect your your residents' desires, reflect the desires of your businesses? Where does that transit service need to be concentrated? And where are there increases required or where might there be adjustments that could be made to reflect that in order to, again, keep the 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 focus on the most efficient and most cost-effective delivery of that local service as possible? So I hope that that kind of helps in that regard. We're we're planning for both the intermunicipal, the regional component. We're also planning with you and your staffs, with your administrations, on the continued delivery of local services. And in that way, through that continued dialogue, through the analysis of the information that we're getting from ridership and that you're getting from your constituents, we will be able to make the appropriate adjustments as we move forward. I think I saw Mayor Herron kind of popping up and my, no, okay. All right. So with that, I will move on to then the the 2022 work plan. So over 2021, there were two key things that we focused on. We focused on starting to define the opening day service, what that would look like. And we also were focused on on standing up the organization, putting in place the administrative capacity to start to deliver these services. And I spoke to the fact that we're starting small with the full recognition that as we mature, as we evolve, as we negotiate the the transfer of service from the member municipalities under the control of the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission, we're likely to assume many of the service delivery models that exist currently. And what I mean by that is that where you have contracted services, for example, in the city of St Albert, we're likely for opening day, we're likely going to be assuming those contracts and we're going to be assuming oversight of the delivery of those. We're also likely to rely on those resources that you add in place in order to deliver the services. So the 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 folks that have been focused on delivering transit services in the city of St Albert, I'm going to use that as an example. The negotiation, the discussion that we're going to engage in with with your administration is going to be around how do we transition that to EMTSC control? That will be reliant or reflective, however, of how we define those opening day services, how we define the levels of service for both the intermunicipal component and for the local component. We're assuming at this point that there will be very little change to your needs from a lo- local service perspective. We're assuming that we're largely going to assume what the what the current service delivery is at a local level. So that is that that work that we started in 2021 continues to be a major focus for 2022. We're now preparing for start of 2023, start of operations in early 2023. There is a lot of work that needs to be done to define the right service levels and then to negotiate the transition of control of the delivery of those services in the six municipalities that control or that deliver service now. I'm going to state a notable exception, and the notable exception for those new members of council is the city of Edmonton. So the other seven municipalities around Edmonton have committed wholly to transition all of the operations into EMTSC throughout the next, throughout the stand-up process. The city of Edmonton, however, when they considered this idea, the city of Edmonton did adopt a two-phase transition approach. The first phase would transition 11% of their current current service delivery hours into this organization to contribute to the intermunicipal portion of the network that we are going to be building for opening day. But the ultimate transition of the remainder of their transit service, of the Edmonton Transit Service, would occur at a point in the future estimated to be four or five years from now. So that is the one additional nuance that I want to highlight. We're very happy for the commitment that Edmonton has made to work with us in building this one solution. But the the solution, as far as Edmonton is concerned, the solution will be transitioned to in a different way than the the transition discussions that we have now engaged in with your administrations. So we're going to continue in 2022 defining what opening day service looks like and preparing to implement that that service delivery in early 2023. We're also going to continue moving on to standing up the organization. You may have heard or you may have seen that the office address for the commission changed on January 1st. And I'm very happy to report that under the guidance of Chair Broadhead and the board, we have now leased refurbished office space and we're now populating that office space with and we're very thankful to the city of Edmonton donation for with a lot of surplus furniture. We are now furnishing our new leased office space location at the corner of 106th Street and Jasper Avenue in Edmonton. And we're going to continue building that office. And we're we're also happy to say that we have built a an integrated conference facility to house our board and committee meetings as part of that that office complex. We've rented about 5,000 square feet and about one-third of that is dedicated to meeting space. That meeting space will be available to to a member municipalities as well, should they need to. But ultimately, it's it's intended to house both our committee and board meetings as well as to be a much required administrative meeting space as well. We'll continue to build up the administration. And by the end of this year, I would anticipate that our staff complement is probably going to be in the order of 15 to 20 people to prepare for that opening day service in early 2023. And I said I would come back to this, that mouthful of Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission, that's the corporate moniker. We recognize that our branding work has to be completed in early this year. We recognize that we've got to develop an identity that will be, will resonate with all of your residents, will resonate with the riders across the the eight-member municipalities. We are going to complete the brand development work that was initiated in 2021. Last but not least, we're going to also focus on building the long-term sustainability of this new commission. The board has agreed that early in 2022, we will be engaging in a bit of an exercise to to refine our strategic objectives. And I'm happy to say that the board has identified and has agreed on three key timeline horizons with regards to those objectives, the long-term horizons, the 10-year horizons, which really reflect a reasonable capital planning period, as well as four-year horizons, which really reflect the work that needs to be done through your term of council, council. So those are the the time horizons that we're going to to work towards. We're going to to focus on identifying the objectives for those. And tied to particularly the long-term and the 10-year, we are focusing we are focusing also on the development of a long term financial framework. No surprise to many of you working in the public sector. Our our role as stewards of our our functions, our services, our communities, our role includes making sure that we're well positioned, not only to deliver services today, but that we position the organization in a way that meets future needs without undue hardship, an undue financial penalty on the the future recipients or future funders of the services. So we want to ensure that we build a long term financial framework that appropriately allocates the costs of delivery of service and planning for improvement, expansion and ongoing delivery of those services to the right recipients, to the right generations. In in the past, I've spoken about generational generational equity or equality. We want to make sure that we build a framework which appropriately allows us to 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 not penalize any particular segment of the public that will be benefiting from the delivery of these services. And that ties into the last major work point for us. As an entity, and this was recognized through the development of the business case, as an entity that now pools the the collective voice of eight municipalities and the residents that will benefit from integrated transit solution for all eight municipalities, our voice is going to be stronger. Our ability to advocate for additional funding mechanisms, be they outright advocacy for outright funding from senior levels of government or for potentially new financial frameworks, new funding mechanisms, our our ability to develop those, our ability to advocate for those will be stronger. We recognize that across Canada in particular, the funding model for transit operations has really been reliant on three sources. Fair revenue, non fair revenue, typically the largest component being advertising, be it at shelters or on the buses themselves, and subsidy from the municipal tax base. By combining our operations and increasing efficiencies through reducing administration, instead of having eight administrative entities, having one administrative entity that that administers an integrated transit service delivery model. And also by by speaking to others about the collective voice of ultimately one and a half million or almost one and a half million people across the member municipalities, we will be stronger in terms of being able to to a- address that that financial need in order to benefit you, the individual councils, to reduce the the future reliance on municipal tax bases. That's our one of our key focal areas as we move forward. So with that, I'm drawing to a close our twenty twenty two work plan summary, just the preceding slide. It does focus on preparation for tw- for twenty twenty three start of service. It does position the commission to serve its member municipalities, not just in twenty twenty three, but in the long term as well. And it does focus on minimizing or trying to find ways to minimize impact on municipal tax budgets, municipal tax levies in the future. One of the things I do want to highlight is that work that focus on reducing impacts to municipal tax levies starts this year. The board has approved a budget for twenty twenty two, a budget that focuses on delivery of the work plan elements by relying on debt financing. What the board was very conscious of is that given that operations are going to continue to be funded by the member municipalities in twenty twenty two, there was a desire not to add additional funding burden to the municipal tax levies, not not to hit municipal tax budgets, tax funded budgets with the additional cost of setting up the organization, setting up the commission. So because of that, the board approved continued reliance on debt financing. Very happy that City of St. Albert and City of Edmonton did step up and did provide the guarantees for the debt financing for the initial five million dollars that is required to set up the organization. The budget that we have identified does in rely or does require additional debt financing in twenty twenty two. And so as such, we will be looking to the municipalities in the coming months for additional security that for that debt financing that would ultimately be repaid through regular operating financing in future years, once we start assuming the operation of transit in the eight municipalities. So with that, I will be happy to wrap up and to answer any questions. We truly believe that the one integrated regional transit solution builds on the work that the CRB and the EMRB have done. It continues with the focus on achieving greater efficiencies by combining resources, reducing overall costs and delivering for all residents of the communities of the Edmonton Capital Region or Edmonton Metropolitan Region in the future. The one exception, and councillor Gromansky might ask about this, the one current operator that is not a member of the EMTSC is Strathcona County. Through all of that work in the original business case setup, that is the one current transit operator that has chosen not to join this organization. And that that organization continues to operate on its own. My intent is to continue working with the 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 administration at Strathcona County to focus in the short term on continuing to integrate operations so that residents of both the the eight member municipalities and residents of Strathcona County can benefit it from integrated service planning and can benefit from having transit schedules that that tie together as efficiently as possible. But also focusing on seeing if we can't bring that that one last remaining transit operator into the fold in the medium to long term.
I do have one question for you, like you talk about reducing administration. So you're at a five projecting, pushing up to about a staff of fifteen to twenty. Will any of the administration be current administrations from those six municipalities right now? And what's the number total currently in those eight areas of administration that you would be replacing?
So I I'm not sure what the total number is, but I certainly anticipate that as we start to build up and as we start to negotiate the transition of services into this organization, many of those positions could be filled by current members of the administrations in the six municipalities that do deliver transit services. We have gone to this point, the five the the five positions that we have advertised. We did advertise publicly and we we went out, we went to the marketplace. We were hoping that we would get, you know, strong interest from the current municipalities that didn't materialize as as strongly as we had hoped, as I had hoped. So to this point, we've been recruiting from the open market, hoping that we would get people that apply to it. Over the coming months, as we start negotiating those service transition agreements, my expectation is that a good number of the the administrative resources that exist in the six municipalities would transition into this organization as we go through those negotiations. I'm I'm a little bit qualified, I'm a little bit careful in terms of that response because naturally, there are going to be discussions that are going to be taking place between those people and the administrations in the in in the various municipalities. And I'm sensitive to the fact that the all of these discussions will be subject to detailed negotiation and 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 agreements that meet everybody's needs.
Okay, and how would the five million dollars be covered off? For example, if it doesn't work out or if it's not a need, you know, per COVID? And like some of your, I guess, pathways, you know, like somebody traveling from Beaumont to Fort Saskatchewan, I I don't really see that happening anytime soon, you know, maybe I don't even know how many years that could possibly even happen. It's not pathways that I see people traveling. So is there a backup plan, you know, if it if you're not operating as efficiently as each one is separately now?
So one of the key things that I spoke to the board about throughout my personal recruitment and that the board has has identified as a priority area is that first service delivery definition, the the definition of service for opening day. And associated with that, there will be a financial analysis that will be carried out with a determination of what the costs will be to provide the various service elements. You might remember, for those of you that that were involved or were familiar with some of the the business case work, there was a conceptual service plan, a similar type of map, for example, that was prepared in the both the original January twenty twenty business case and then refined and I would say adjusted to reflect the fact that between January twenty twenty and June of twenty twenty, there were a number of municipalities that elected not to participate in this endeavor, and the number went from thirteen to eight during that time. So there was a refined conceptual plan that was presented in the June twenty twenty addendum. Given that I engaged in discussions with the board in twenty twenty one, well into the COVID-related challenges that all transit agencies have experienced, one of the main things that I highlighted for the board is that we really need to take a look at that opening day service plan to reflect current ridership and financial realities. And tied to that, I've said to the board, we need to put together a plan that costs what we would deliver on opening day and apportions the costs to each of the municipal members. As I said in my presentation, there are three sources of funding that transit operations relies on. Fair revenue, non fair revenue, and ultimately tax municipal tax levy subsidization. That last will not, that last one will not disappear. Our hope is that we're going to be able to minimize that reliance on municipal tax subsidy in the medium to long term. In the initial term, the subsidy levels are going to be, I would estimate, going to be similar to what you're doing, what you're spending on transit services today. The reality is, is that we we have to provide some level of transit service, recognizing that fair revenues and non fair revenues have been significantly impacted, significantly decreased throughout COVID. Those lines that you talked about on that map, those lines are conceptual maps. I do I do not anticipate that all of those met, all of those lines are are lines that will form part of or that we will, we will be able to fund in the initial or the opening day service plan. That that I think you're absolutely right in pointing out that there is going to be, there are going to be desires, long term desires that are appropriate for the long term, but in the initial, in the opening day, given our financial realities, given our desire to minimize the future requisitions to the member municipalities in twenty twenty three, we're going to have to put on 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 the plan for the future. In twenty twenty three, I would anticipate the board is going to improve a service plan that focuses on those parts of that interregional or intermunicipal network or regional network that has the highest ability to attract ridership for twenty twenty three.
So services.
Sorry, Shelley, I'm gonna jump in. We've got about four minutes left for questions, so I'm wondering if we can maybe jump to Mike if he has any questions, kind of as a new person, and then Wes, you could could wrap things up. And I know Shelley, if there are additional questions, we've got Wes is an excellent resource, so we could send anything to him. Does that work for everyone?
Just to add to that, councillor, I'm happy to have to answer any questions after the fact. So councillor, that's that's fine too.
That's great. So Mike, did you have anything before Wes wraps things up?
Uh, no, because I'll I'll lean on Wes directly if I have any other questions. I got his number.
Thanks. And 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 Shelley, thanks for those questions. And and just to wrap up, I do know that Paul's very accessible. So if if you want to spend some time with him individually, Shelley, please reach out to him. I know he's he's open to that for sure. Great presentation, Paul. I appreciate that. One of the things that I wanted to just highlight is that the the idea of of exploring sort of other fair or or other revenue streams with the higher orders of government. This is, this is not new in Canada. Other sort of regional transit bodies have have engaged in provincial and and federal discussions around this and have been successful. And so we anticipate being successful, at least in the long term, maybe not in the short term, but that is certainly a hope of us is that as we work together as a region, that those sorts of funding resources may come to us to help reduce the tax burden on our local municipalities. So, uh, thank you, councillor Jolly. I know that you're taking over for the mayor here, so if you want to have any closing comments, I'll leave it to you.
I don't have any. If anyone else in the room kind of has the last really quick question about kind of how how the commission works, anything like that. Okay. Um, we've got, thanks so much, Paul, for joining us. That was excellent. I think that's this was, I was commenting to Wes, this is my first opportunity to hear you speak, so so really impressed, glad to meet you. It's too bad it's not in person. Our next group starts in fifteen minutes, so we've got fifteen minute break and then we're on to Edmonton Global, so we'll see everyone in fifteen.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
All right, I'm showing eleven o'clock. Welcome to Edmonton Global for for coming and joining us. I believe Mayor Heron is our rep on Edmonton Global at Global, and I'm I'm the alternate, but I'm afraid I don't know. I haven't had a chance to attend meetings apart from at city council meetings. So Bernie, I believe I'm handing it off to you. Is that right?
That is correct. Good morning.
Thank you.
Did you want to make some opening remarks, councillor Jolly, or do you want me to proceed?
I don't have any opening remarks. If we could, actually, we'll go around the room and we can introduce members of council. And then if you could introduce your team, that would be great. So, Mike, we'll start with you.
Sure. Good morning. Bernie, I think we've seen each other on other Zoom calls, Edmonton Global. But nonetheless, I'm still a new councillor. Look forward to again kind of learning more on on this one, because it was a big dump of information last time around. So I probably only retained a small portion of it, and this will help again fill in some of the blanks for me. Thank you.
Shelley.
Good morning, Shelley Bermansky, new to St. Albert City Council. Good to see you again.
Wes.
Good morning, Wes Broadhead on council here for a while. But anyway, it's good to see you and looking forward to the presentation.
Sheena.
Good morning, she is third term as city council. Looking forward to this.
I'm Natalie Jolly. It's my second term. So I'll pass that off to you, Bernie. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, councillor Jolly, and Happy New Year to council. Edmonton Global is delighted to be back in front of St. Albert Council. And we really appreciate the support that you gave us in the December meeting and demonstrating your ongoing commitment to economic development in the region. Today, I am accompanied by my colleagues from Edmonton Global, fellow board member Sheldon Hudson, along with Ria Gangoli and Jeff Bell, and each of them will provide a brief introduction in a moment. I want to give special thanks to Amanda Borman, our office manager, who works tirelessly behind the scenes to create and manage the slide presentation as we as we proceed through it. And you'll notice that some of our lineup has changed. We've had some illnesses among our teams. So from the briefing note you received, we made a few adjustments, which is, of course, all too common these days. So as a reminder, as some of you had noted, I'm Bernie Coleman, and I was in front of council previously in December. I am a board member, and it's my second term on the board of Edmonton Global. I retired from a long career at IBM in the technology sector where I left as the vice president of our public sector business in Alberta. And I now serve on boards of directors, including the Nowcore Real Estate Investment Trust, which is a new board that I've joined since we were last together, as well as Arcan Trailer NRV, and I lead a peer mentoring group of CEOs, fourteen of them across the region. So I'm very committed to the support and the success of the region, and I now invite my colleague Sheldon Hudson to introduce himself as well.
Thank you very much, Bernie. It's very good to meet everyone. Yes, my name's Sheldon Hudson. I'm a board member of Edmonton Global. I also sit on the Finance and Audit Committee for Edmonton Global with Bernie. For my day job, I'm the president of Alter Engineering, which is a local engineering firm in Edmonton that specializes in land development and transportation. And I've been I've been with the company since, well, quite a while. I was a student here in nineteen ninety-three after graduating from the University of Alberta. So we do the majority of our work across the Edmonton Metropolitan Region, as I said, in line development and and in the transportation field. I'm very happy to be here to talk to you today.
Great. Thanks, Sheldon. Something he didn't mention is he is a founding member of the inaugural board. So before the board was even created, he predates the inception of the organization, so has a long history. And we're welcome to have him today. From our management and executive team, Ria Gangoli, please introduce yourself.
Hi, it's very nice to meet all of you. My name is Ria Gangoli. I am the VP of Strategy and Innovation with Edmonton Global. Our priorities include global competitiveness, strategic initiatives, as well as partnerships for Edmonton Global. So I'm really excited to be here today and to be connecting with all of you.
And then Jeff Bell, who you're going to hear quite a lot from today. I'll ask Jeff to introduce himself.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Very nice to meet you all. My name is Jeff Bell. My role here at Edmonton Global is the Director of Research. So really, what that entails is supporting the other members on the team to try to tell stories with with data and empirical evidence. So looking forward to sharing some of our research on transportation and logistics in in the short while here. Nice to meet you.
Okay, and I've already indicated Amanda's role. So thank you again for having us join you. Our agenda today is that Sheldon and I will start with a brief overview of Edmonton Global, some of which you've heard. So we're going to keep it brief, but I think, you know, many things come at you throughout the day. So we're just going to set the stage briefly and talk about, you know, some of some of Edmonton Global's background. But the real in-depth discussion today is going to be led by Jeff. And we believe it will be of particular interest to St. Albert because it's on one of our primary focus areas, which is global logistics. And so the majority of the time we're going to leave to that presentation. I will manage the time and make sure we have ample time at the end for Q and A, at least twenty minutes. So that's our plan for the next hour, if that's okay, councillor Jolly. And we did not circulate the slides in advance, but we are committed to sharing with you them with you at the end. So you will, you will get them. So going to slide two, and I'll go into slide two, Amanda, and start with that first chart, which I know for sure you've seen before. It talks about the purpose of Edmonton Global. But what I want to highlight here is that we really are focused on attracting international investment in areas where we know that we can win. And this is based on in-depth research. As Jeff mentioned, we we spend a lot of time looking at data and using a data-driven approach to develop our strategies that are going to help us focus on what will transform the economy of our region. The next chart, which is our principles, and we believe any organization starts right here. What are our principles and how do we live up to them? Especially when we have fourteen different shareholders, of which you are one. The shared investment and shared value is a critical one that we as a board are committed to reporting back to you. I mentioned when we last met that we have an economic impact study underway, and as soon as those results are available, we will share them with you as our shareholders. Because the investment that we've already made in the region, we need to economically or empirically share with you what the results of that is. We do have one shareholder, one vote, which is the inclusive model and very important to our success. So it doesn't matter on the size or contribution to the funding of our organization. Each municipality has a one-vote model. On the area of transparency, you know, we work very hard to have proper communication and updates to you. We do this through our monthly EDO meetings. We have board to council meetings. We do virtual briefings. And we also make sure we have informal touchpoints. And the team asked me to single out Mike Erickson, who I know was on the call, who's been very collaborative in working with us, supporting us, and putting together this logistics presentation today, as well as having worked with us on an investment opportunity previously in the agriculture space. So we are committed to transparency and accountability and keeping our portal up. So we are committed to transparency and accountability and keeping our portal up to date. This is a regional database that provides information on our deal pipeline. And we also make sure that we customize the information where we can to each shareholder municipality, which is part of the conversation we're having with you today. On the regional voice piece, harmonizing having one brand, one voice for the region is an imperative to our success. And anecdotally, at the 2021 Site Selector Conference that was held in Arizona very recently, the site selectors told us the single biggest innovation in economic development is having agencies take a regional approach. They actually stated that they don't have the time or energy to engage with individual municipalities. They're looking for larger investment collaboration with the larger investment dollars. And that's what will lead to the success for a region. So that was actually stated at 2021 Site Selector Conference Economics. And I think it's a really strong validation of the best practice and the work that we're doing together at Edmonton Global. And then finally, when it comes to local autonomy, as much as we work as a region, we understand that we do need to work closely with each municipality to ensure that we respect the differing needs and that we have full transparency and serve our 14 municipalities effectively. So with that as a backdrop, I'm now going to invite Sheldon to talk about the priorities in the region. Oh, pardon me. The priorities in the region are listed here. We've talked about them before. It's FD and I and trade. It's our strong brand, our partnerships, our organizational excellence. This is really what drives the work that we do from a priority basis. But I'm going to invite Sheldon now to talk about the ecosystem and the importance of the ecosystem as he has personal experience in this area. Sheldon, over to you. And Sheldon, you're on mute. I'm trying to speak.
You think I would learn by now? Thank you very much, Bernie. I think it's important to put the discussion of Edmonton Global's role within the ecosystem in a bit of a historical context. And like Bernie had mentioned before, my work actually predates Edmonton Global as as an official organization. I was tasked to be part of it right at the inception. And so I participated in a group that was tasked by the EMRV at the time to develop the concept of a regional economic development entity. And so my first medium was actually December of 2016. And over that first year, we established the framework for the company that we now know was Edmonton Global. We successfully signed up initially 15 municipalities as shareholders of this new corporation. We stood up the organization and and we're able to successfully get our first permanent board in place, which Bernie and I have both been part of, and we're both in our second term. We hired our CEO Malcolm Bruce, and then Malcolm went through and assembled a world-class team, which part of the team is here today, to execute on our strategy and achieve the results. And I think it was important to put that in context. That was a remarkable achievement at the time. And one that people were saying that this was probably 20 or 30 years in the making. And we just had the right mix of leaders at the time that were willing to put their hand out and say, yes, we've got to do this for the benefits of the region. And but we knew that this was only possible because we had some incredible talent that already existed in the region. And our success was dependent on us collaborating with our regional partners and connecting into that ecosystem. And so we know we knew that we couldn't do it alone. And so some of our partners that we knew that we had to do to to take advantage of and to partner with are local service providers. We've got great local economic development agencies, including Invest Alberta as well as Invest Canada. We've got Trade Commissioner offices that we can connect into. Each municipality's got strong EDOs that we are able to connect into and to really speak to the value of each asset in each part of our region, as well as our municipal administrations. And so it really does take a village to bring the investment to the region, as Bernie had just outlined with that recent site selectors conference. And we recognize that collaborating locally will help us compete globally. Collaboration is the key to what we do. And whether it's through receiving a lead from Invest Alberta or working with your local EDO to highlight your unique regional assets, we recognize the importance of collaboration to build success. We can go to the next slide, please. So Edmonton Global has developed a regional narrative that's based on our value proposition. And it combines what is uniquely compelling to our region with what local or what global investors are looking for. So we've come up with we're young, educated and growing. And the reason for that, we are one of the youngest regions in Canada. Our average age in the Edmonton Metropolitan Region is in the mid 30s. We're educated. We've got 130,000 students across seven post-secondary institutions. And we're growing. The Edmonton Metropolitan Region is one of the fastest-growing regions in Canada based on GDP growth. And so you'll notice that young, educated, growing YEG is also our airport code. And and it's really important that we've got a strong brand that helps unify us and makes us stand out for the international community. Our region grew by over 26,000 people, which is really remarkable considering the pandemic. So that's from July 2020 to July 2021. Next slide, please. So we also want to highlight that there's some other important aspects of our region that's also equally important. And one of them is livability, you know, making sure that we've got a livable area that is attractive for people to invest within our region. Affordability is an amazing benefit of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. And it's a consideration companies often look for when relocating to an area. Of interest, Edmonton Metropolitan Region is the fourth most affordable region on the continent. We're also one of the most entrepreneurial regions in Canada. We've got one of the best places to start a business, which isn't surprising considering our great support networks that we've created, including Alberta Innovates and Northern Alberta Business Innovators. And we're also internationally focused. We're designated as a foreign trade zone, which is Port Alberta. And we lead the nation in a growth rate of 10.48% in global exports. And just as a side, when when I I try to put this in context, so I'm I'm an engineer. I worked in the engineering field. When you take a look at at downtown Edmonton, for example, with the new StanTech Tower. So StanTech was a local success story, a local engineering firm started in 1950s in Edmonton. And now they're absolutely a global player. And the CEO at the time, Bob Gomes, was a local Edmontonian, born and raised in Edmonton. And he made the decision to keep StanTech's head office in Edmonton, which is just a fabulous success story for us. Next slide, please. So we've listed five transformational opportunities. And it really is us keeping an eye on the current assets and where we want to go for our future. Edmonton Global is focused on five opportunities that we believe will be transformative, transformational for our region. And so these fit within our key sectors that we've identified in our overall strategy for economic development for our region. So the first one is hydrogen. And you there's been a lot of a lot of press on hydrogen recently. The Edmonton Metropolitan Region is a launch point for the emerging North American hydrogen economy. The region will be a global epicenter and attract investment in production, innovation and research because of our unique ability to produce low-cost, zero-emission hydrogen on a global scale. We're the world's second lowest-cost hydrogen producer. We've got more than 60% of Canada's hydrogen supply that comes right here from Alberta. And much of that is produced within the Edmonton region. We've got the world's lowest carbon, low-carbon hydrogen and carbon capture and sequestration projects. And we've already got 50 kilometers of hydrogen pipeline. Our second area is biopharma and diabetes. So we've got top-notch facilities and research and development institutions here that are government-backed initiative, carrying world-class talent. Over 69% of Alberta Life Sciences companies are located in the Edmonton Metropolitan Region. And they contribute nearly 7.5% of our region's GDP, which is significant. Our third area is food and agriculture. We've got a flourishing food and agricultural ecosystem within the region that spans the entire value chain. This includes primary production with our natural advantages to the quality of our soil and our favorable growing climate. And we've also got a strong value-add sector where we manufacture supplementary projects that are we then put within the supply chain. We've also got global logistics, and you'll hear a lot more on this from Jeff. In the Edmonton Metropolitan Region, we have the ability to connect air, rail, road, pipeline, as well as access to port infrastructure to create leading logistics and cargo hubs right here in Canada. We've already named already named this, as I talked about earlier, the Foreign Trade Zone, which is Port Alberta. And that gives us efficiencies through diverse intermodal connections. We've got our artificial intelligence leading here right at the University of Alberta and put into practice at our our international airport. And that helps improve efficiencies. We've got 14 trade agreements and access to markets of over 1.5 billion people. We've got an integrated supply chain, and we've got significant expertise in the transportation and logistics industries. And finally, we've got capacity and infrastructure to handle very sensitive goods. And then finally, this is all if we put an umbrella over all of it. I think the emerging technology, high-technology and artificial intelligence, we've got some significant advantages here, as I said, with with our some of the folks that we've got at the University of Alberta and some of the companies that we've got that are powering these innovations across the region. We've got a 53% increase in the number of technology businesses that are headquartered in Alberta. And the Edmonton Metropolitan Region is fostering innovations in each one of those target sectors. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff to provide more specifics on advantages that we've got within our region. Jeff?
Thanks so much, Sheldon. I guess we can go to the next slide, please. But I wanted to start off again by underlining what Bernie and Sheldon said about acknowledging the St. Albert team, Mike, Pat and Christian. So I just wanted to thank them for their role in their ongoing collaboration. So I think really what we what we heard, I believe, I understand in the last presentation and again from Sheldon and Bernie right now is a little bit of the the why of Edmonton Global. What I want to try to get into a little bit with these slides is the how and the what. In other words, how Edmonton Global does its work and 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 what we do. And I think in a nutshell, what we do is we try to find value propositions, and it's really a sales job. So often what I like to say is, if you go traveling abroad, someone from the Edmonton region, people will ask you where where you're from. You'll say Canada. I'll say, oh, yeah, I know someone in Toronto. I'm not sure if anyone else has experienced this, but I've experienced this personally. And I say, oh, no, I'm from Western Canada. Oh, Vancouver. No, Alberta. Oh, Calgary. And and so the Edmonton region is several layers down the totem pole of awareness in international markets. So really what Edmonton Global is trying to do is increase that awareness and get people thinking about our region. As the fifth most populous region in Canada, we should be at least number five on that list. And and so I think we our job at Edmonton Global is to help make sure that we are that five. So to this slide, you know, I'm going to I have a whole presentation. I have a whole deck on transportation and logistics that I'm going to share with you. So I think, Amanda, we can just go to the next slide. Before I get into the logistics piece, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our approach. And I think the key words here are collaboration. We want to try to work with Invest in Canada, with Invest Alberta, with the Trade Commissioner Services Offices around the world, with Edmonton International Airport, and of course, with folks such as yourselves, the local stakeholders. We want to be purposeful. And so what we've done is created a structured deal flow where we can track our progress, the number of leads, and then very carefully track them across the the sales funnel until we get a close, whether it's a win or a loss. As as Bernie alluded to, we're trying to be transparent with that. So we want to say, okay, this is a win. This is a loss. This is where we're at. This is how many details we have. And we've built this this platform, as some of your colleagues are already aware, which we call the Stakeholder Portal to give transparency. And then finally, as Sheldon, we want to try to be targeted. So we've we can't win at everything, even though we're we have many strengths as a region. But we're focusing our efforts in in the various buckets that Sheldon just spoke to, one of which is transportation and logistics. And so that's what I want to talk to you about today. So with that, can we go to the next slide, please? And then the next one as well. There is a little video in that one we just went by that has a connection to a nice video that are my colleagues put together. So you may want to take a look at that. Next, I think there's a few animations in here, so my apologies. And then again. Okay, so I, you know, when we talk about transportation logistics, it's many, many different things. I'm going to focus today on the on the ones on the left, air and rail. If I have time, I'm going to talk to trucking as well. And I will talk about the the Port Alberta as well. Pipelines, I will leave for another day. Next slide, please. So really, the origin of this story starts with a survey that predates me at Edmonton Global. A survey went out to many of the site selectors, actors, I think primarily in North America. So these are the people that consult on big companies. Where do they want to set up their next manufacturing facility? Where do they want to set up their new their next call center, whatever the case may be, their next research lab? And the question was, have you ever considered the Edmonton Metro region? And two important realizations came out of this exercise. One is that hardly anyone had heard of the Edmonton region. 82% said they've never even heard of Edmonton. So of course, they're not going to be considering Edmonton as an expansion opportunity or advising their clients to do so if they've never heard of us. Those 18% that had heard of us, they said, oh, you're remote and isolated and cold. And we may have heard of you, but we're not interested, basically. So, okay, this is both a problem for the Edmonton region, but it's also a huge opportunity. Because those 82% of us have never heard of us, we have an opportunity to create a narrative around them and and basically tell the story that we want to tell as opposed to the story that that they may have heard, whether on a space on fact. So that's the start of this story while we're talking about transportation logistics, to dispel that myth that we're remote. Because we're only remote relative to certain places. Other areas, of course, we're very connected to. Next slide, please. So first, I'm going to talk about air. Next slide. And this is often what people think of when they think of connectivity in terms of air. In fact, this is completely wrong. If you go to the next slide, it'll give you a much better picture of what the reality looks like. So people, when they think of connectivity between North America and Asia, they they think of that previous slide often. This is what they should be thinking. What this slide tells us is that the Edmonton region is actually closer to Asia than any airport in the lower 48 states. The only airport, major airport that's closer than the Edmonton Region Airport is Vancouver. So this is very important. And you can see the stats there on the left that especially China, we're very well-connected, but the same holds true to to other Asian cities. So we're close to Asia. We're not remote. We're close to Asia. Next slide, please. A whole bunch of other reasons. I won't read them. You'll get the slides afterwards. But I do want to draw your attention to a few interesting ones from my perspective. One is the Edmonton International Airport is the only airport in Canada, and I think one of three in North America that is cold-chain certified. That's the second last bullet there. What this means is that if you are transporting by air, things like food or medicines that have a best before date or that are temperature-sensitive, you can Edmonton is very well-possessed. The Edmonton region is very well-positioned to deal in those goods, much more so than other airports in Canada. The second one I want to draw to your attention to is the last bullet there, which is the low supply of fuel. Even Calgary Airport gets its fuel from the Edmonton region. So that kind of reliable supply of fuel should not be underestimated as a strategic advantage in the air cargo space. I think next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about the rail connectivity and click again, please, Amanda. So this picture shows us an up-to-date picture of the rail connectivity with the recent purchase of Kansas City Southern by CP. We now have two, the Gulf Coast is accessible through both the major rail lines in in Canada. And we have excellent connectivity to both Vancouver Port. And of particular interest to me is the Port of Prince Rupert, which I'll get into a little bit more in a second here. Next slide. So one of the most interesting things in my research that I came across was this fact that if you want to get from the the Pacific Ocean to interior Alberta, Edmonton is closer to both major ports by time. Even though Calgary is closer to Vancouver than Edmonton physically, it's faster to get to Edmonton from Vancouver just because of rail logistics. So you can, we can beat Calgary by 12 hours from Vancouver and much more from from Prince Rupert. So that was very interesting. And this is a story that I think is not very well- So that was very interesting and this is a, a story that I think, uh, is not very well understood in, in the Edmonton region. This next one, um, talks about, um, other naturally geographic advantages we have compared to some of the other Pacific ports. Um, Vancouver, but especially Los Angeles and Seattle. Um, what's interesting is that if you, if you go from the West Coast to Chicago, which is the biggest, uh, logistics hub in the United States, um, we have a much lower elevation. In other words, you don't have to get over, um, a high, as high mountains, uh, through Prince Rupert as you do from, um, uh, either Seattle or Los Angeles. And what this means is that you can do the same, um, trip with much less fuel. Because you're, uh, you can actually cut the number of engines you're using in half. And so this, uh, translates into fuel savings for, uh, people who are trying to transport goods from the Pacific to Chicago. Next slide please. Uh, and that, that's just a summary of the fuel savings. So we can go to the next one. Um, and then this is compounded by the natural geographic advantages we have in the shipping industry. You can go to the next one please, Amanda. Uh, so the same thing, you, this picture from before, this is still wrong. It's not directly across the Pacific Ocean. Um, again, if you show the next slide, you'll see that it's actually much faster to get from Asia to Prince Rupert than it is to get from Asia to Los Angeles. Um, and it, it's a matter of days shorter and I think the next slide shows that. Um, yeah, so here we go. Um, the number of, uh, according to, to, um, to CN, uh, from Tokyo to Prince Rupert is a hundred and thirty-two hours, uh, sorry, a hundred and ninety-two hours. And Tokyo to Los Angeles is two hundred and forty-three hours. So you can see that you're saving days of time in the Pacific, um, if you land in Prince Rupert. And the similar arguments would be applied to, to Vancouver. Um, and then I'll go back one sec. I just wanted to also speak to the, um, uh, to the estimated rail times here. Um, so if you go Tokyo all the way to Chicago, you can see the time here via Edmonton is, uh, comparable with Los Angeles. So you can get from Tokyo to Chicago through Edmonton, um, in the same amount of time as, uh, uh, via LA. Um, and that via Edmonton is very important because all traffic going in or out of Prince Rupert passes through the Edmonton region. So this is gonna be important to St. Albert, uh, as well as all the other regional players. Uh, next slide please. Um, that's before you consider something called dwell time or congestion in the ports. Once you start considering, uh, congestion in the ports, it's even more, uh, of a reason why you'd want to do Prince Rupert in Vancouver. As you could, this is the most recent data from last year. The average time a ship was waiting in Los Angeles port was eighteen days. In, uh, compared to Prince Rupert, three and a half days. So, um, once you consider that, all of a sudden, you're cutting off almost two weeks of travel time using Prince Rupert. So speed of moving your goods is of strategic importance to your business. You want to be going through St. Albert and, and Edmonton. Next slide please. I think this slide just summarizes, uh, the same graphic before, but now you're including, uh, dwell times. So now all of a sudden Prince Rupert Edmonton Road has a, a huge advantage over Los Angeles and Seattle. Next slide please. Um, and this partially explains why the Port of Prince Rupert is the fastest growing port in Canada. And it's expected to overtake the Port of Montreal as the second busiest port in Canada within the next few years. So right now it goes Vancouver, Montreal, Prince Rupert. Soon it's gonna be Vancouver, Prince Rupert, Montreal. Um, next slide. And, uh, and this just kind of summarizes some of the interesting things from a, from a cargo perspective. Basically, um, shippers are already recognizing the importance of between Prince Rupert and the United States. And you can see here in these numbers that, uh, Prince Rupert's already exporting more containers originating in the States than Vancouver. And, uh, desk, incoming stuff is growing faster than Vancouver. And all these, all this stuff is passing through the Edmonton region. Um, interestingly, I, I was on a conference call from, um, the Port of Prince Rupert Port Authority a few months back. And he said that almost all the auto parts that are, that, or I think he said all the auto parts that go to, uh, Windsor, Ontario from Asia pass through the Edmonton region. I just thought that was an interesting little anecdote and it'd be similar for Detroit, right? The, the, a lot of the stuff that comes through Canada would, would pass through Edmonton. Next slide please. Um, thi- this is just a, a similar slide that shows that, um, you know, if you're talking about egg, uh, egg products or, uh, energy products like hydrogen, um, we have a competitive advantage compared to the Middle East, uh, as well as the Gulf of Mexico, because we can get things to, uh, Asia much faster than, than the Middle East can or the Gulf of Mexico can, or, or Los Angeles, the low, uh, further south on the, on the Pacific coast. Okay, so that, I think that's talking about the, the water stuff and the next slide, I think is gonna, yeah, we're gonna talk about trucking. Um, trucking, you know, this, this slide just shows, um, that we're well-connected, both, uh, north, south, east, west. But also of note is things like the Anthony Henday, which, which, uh, connects us regionally, which should not be underestimated, the importance of that. So once you invest in St. Albert or you invest in the Edmonton region, you can move your goods to the airport, to Vilneuve Airport, to other parts in the region, which, uh, which is very important. Uh, next slide, wanted to talk a little bit about some of the innovation that's happening in, um, in the trucking industry. Because I think, uh, our region is doing some very pioneering stuff in this, in the space. The first one is the hydrogen pilot plant that some of you may be aware of. They're running hydrogen-powered trucks between Edmonton and Calgary on the QB two. Um, they're investing in hydrogen infrastructure. Uh, Active Aurora is the first connected vehicle testbed in Canada. It's here in the Edmonton region, uh, basically, um, pioneering ways for cars to talk to other cars and cars to talk to infrastructure-like traffic. Um, to, uh, in a smart city-type way, platooning trials, that's the, the bottom picture there where there's one driver in the first truck, but in the second truck, there isn't a driver. It's just following the, the, uh, its neighbor automatically. Uh, so doing some, again, some pioneering stuff on the QB two there. Um, and then some really neat stuff that the Alberta Motor Transport Association is doing here in the region on, on innovative training for, for truckers. Next slide just shows some, uh, of the local companies in the trucking space that are doing in, interesting things. I won't dwell on that. I, I'll get to, we'll go to the next slide, which talks about, um, the port, um, Alberta or this, this inland port. Um, concept, which I think is of particular interest to Edmonton Global. And, and I would argue should be of interest to, uh, St. Albert City Council as well. Because, um, this is where we capitalize on all those, uh, strategic advantages I was just covering. Do you want to go to the next slide please, Amanda? Um, so another compelling reason why people would want to set up shop here. I mean, it's all well and good that someone wants to, uh, pass through here on their way to Chicago. But what we want to do is we want to create stickiness. We want to get those people who are passing through the region to stay in the region and set up shop in the region. Develop warehouses, develop, uh, uh, ma- uh, value-add manufacturing. And this is one of the reasons they might want to do that is because our real estate is so much cheaper. Interesting to me is if you compare the yellow bars, which is the Greater Vancouver area, were, were much cheaper than, than them. So, uh, that's one of the compelling reasons you might want to do this. And this is why, I'm not sure if any of you saw, but the CBRE, the, the local real estate company did a big piece on this recently because they see the value in, in this logistics, uh, piece. Next slide please. Um, and Sheldon alluded to some of this, uh, during his remarks, but, um, we have this, this thing called the Foreign Trade Zone, which is underutilized at the moment. And Edmonton Global in the next, um, few months is trying to really create some buzz around this opportunity where I think there's a, a website in the works. Um, and basically, uh, create some excitement around, around this. What it allows people to do is, um, uh, save some, some taxes and, and some duties, uh, as they, um, invest in the Edmonton region. And, and I think Sheldon spoke to these other points here, so I'll just move on to the next slide please. Uh, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit specifically about the St. Albert context before we move into the question, the Q and A section. Amanda? Thank you. Um, so I did a little bit of research using, uh, this D and B Hoover's tool that, that we have access to. Um, and found out that, uh, St. Albert already is very well invested in the transportation and logistics, uh, space. So there's two hundred and twelve companies, um, working directly in that space, employing more than fifteen hundred people directly in, uh, St. Albert. Um, and with the revenues over two hundred and twenty-five million. If you go to the next slide, um, this speaks to the importance of regionalism, which of course Edmonton Global is, is very important, um, keen on. But added to those, those people employed in the, in the region, reason, sorry, the previous slide would be a number also of, of this slide. So this slide talks about, um, where the people, the residents of St. Albert are employed. And you can see they're employed all throughout the region. So my guess is that a number of those would also be employed in the transportation logistics space. Next slide please. Um, and then I just wanted to quickly acknowledge that we are aware that this is an opportunity also for your region based on, on these three and, and probably others that I'm unaware of. Um, but the Lakeview Business Park, the Campbell Business Park and Anthony Henday Business Park are, are ripe locations for transportation logistics, um, investments, uh, whether it's, uh, distribution warehouses or, um, manufacturing, um, facilities that require transportation, rely on transportation logistics opportunities. Um, so I think with that, that, that's the end of my prepared slides. So, uh, I'll do my best to, to answer any questions you have. Um, if, if they get particularly hard, I might toss them over the fence to some of my colleagues.
So thank you, Jeff. I think you did an outstanding job of sharing with council a deeper dive in one of our, uh, key focus areas. Uh, as we mentioned at the beginning, we picked logistics because of the particular relevancy to St. Albert. But we have, uh, equal depth of information on our other transformational areas that we talked about. And hopefully this demonstrates to you the power of the region, working together to look at the assets that are available and creating the messages that are relevant to site selectors, getting the word out to where we can actually have an influence on decisions that are being made. And that's our intent. And so, uh, we will open it up for questions. I will moderate that, uh, if that's okay, counselor? Or, or would you like to, I guess I should moderate because I know who I'm gonna pass them to.
That, that sounds great. I just wanted to point out, I made an error and I, I forgot to, uh, give Ken Mackay a chance to introduce himself at the beginning. He doesn't have video, but he is here, uh, via audio. So, uh, sorry about-
No problem. I, you know what, Bernie, I, if you'd like, I, I don't have any other way of, uh, raising my hand right now. I'm, I'm sell. But, uh, I do have a question in relation to the last kind of comments, an excellent, excellent, uh, overview in relation to logistics. Thank you very much, uh, very valuable. But I'm, I'm still, um, I'm kind of curious in relation to then the tie-in. How does a tie-in connect? I mean, we talk about region, we talk about, uh, the opportunities. And Edmonton Global goes out and makes the connections. Then how, physically, how do we connect with our economic development people? I know you, you gave a shout out to, uh, Michael and his group and I appreciate that. But where's the connection and how, uh, and how can that be improved if it's, if it's not optimal right now?
I'm gonna let, uh, maybe Ria take a stab at that because it is an operational, like, question of how we operate uh, and execute operationally. So Ria?
Yeah, so we do have a number of touchpoints with, uh, your administration, particularly through monthly EDO meetings where we're connecting quite closely with a variety of different EDO, um, with a variety, uh, of EDOs. Just to talk a little bit about what we're doing and how we're doing it and how we can connect EDOs to these various opportunities. Uh, we also have other touchpoints, virtual briefings that we put on for, um, our shareholders so that you can get connected to some of the great opportunities that we are working on here at Edmonton Global. Um, and we also recognize and, and very much, um, what we think is very important is constant communication. So very much what Jeff did in terms of reaching out with Mike Erickson, as well as others. We, um, like to explore and continue to support constant ways of communicating with your, with your administration. So we think that's an important tool for us as we look to these, uh, big opportunities. Jeff, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I might add, uh, the, the main role that I see as, as the organization is to bring folks to the region. And like I said at the very beginning, right, make sure that the region's on their radar, so that we're not being overlooked, overlooked. Um, in favor of places like Vancouver or, or Toronto or Saskatoon, whatever, whatever the case may be, right? That, that, uh, we, we bring, we're bringing people to the region and getting them thinking about the region. Um, the, the other thing I might mention is we do have that, a, a site selector tool on our website, which, which helps, um, prospective investors, uh, identify suitable real estate in, in the region. So, you know, we're looking for a warehouse between X and Y size. It has to have these utilities, et cetera. So, so that's, uh, I, I guess, uh, a way to empower the investor to, to explore the region on their own.
Yeah, and that's going outward, um, Ken, but, but also inward, we have put a portal on with the pipeline of all of our opportunities so that anybody in the region can go and look at that pipeline of opportunity and to see where it's at. So it's both how we go external, but then how we communicate back internal. And I think at the council meeting, I talked about the compact, which is an agreement we have about the processes that we follow within working with the EDOs. So we're very clear on roles and responsibilities. So we've spent a lot of time working through those details. Um, but I, you know, we, we've just given you a bunch of information. Did we answer your question or do you have a follow-up?
No, I, you did answer my question and I appreciate it. And I, uh, uh, I'm, I guess part of what I want to know is like, so from a gap analysis, uh, is that a big role for Edmonton Global? So as Jeff, you're going out and you're searching the world and trying to, trying to get, uh, the world's attention to come in and see the advantages that the Edmonton region has. Are we also doing something ourselves, uh, where as a region or as a municipality, where we can say, here's an opportunity, like you've identified our business parks, but, um, is there a particular opportunity that any of those five areas, farmer, farmer, uh, pharmacies or biotechnical or, or hydrogen that we're missing out on because we don't have something? So, so that we could potentially, uh, we're not in the game now, obviously, uh, in, uh, because, you know, of this. Is there anything like that that's going on in, uh, reg- regionally?
I think that sounds like a great strategic conversation that you might want to have as a council. And if you're asking us to highlight or help you understand where the gaps might be with our, like, we looked at it from a research basis and said, what do we have in the region? What are our assets? And you know, Sheldon mentioned, this has been like a thirty-year journey. I mean, I was on the board of the Chamber of Commerce ten years ago in Edmonton, Board Chair. We wrestled with some of these things back then. And what I'm seeing us do now is actually make the story more compelling, particularly around Port Alberta, which was actually formed like at least ten years ago, to make it, you know, an, an opportunity to be a logistics. But part of it is what the world needs as well. So supply chain has never been as sexy as it is right now because of all the issues in supply chain. So we have to match what we have in the region as assets, what the world needs and what the story is that we can make compelling. And it's a time and place that you can, um, leverage that particular situation. So in terms of what, you know, and it takes years to develop. I mean, think of the industrial parks, Lakeview. I mean, I think what we heard at the last council is you're still developing that. It takes years to develop these, uh, you know, assets as we call them. But if, but if you're asking about particular gaps for St. Albert around some of our strategic initiatives, uh, Ria, would you like to take a, a shot at that one?
Yeah, and I think, uh, I, I come back to communication. I think one of the things that we're trying to establish are those regular touchpoints and communication touchpoints with, uh, your administration to understand, you know, what we're looking for and how it can potentially line up with what St. Albert currently has and perhaps what St. Albert is interested in pursuing into the future. So working closely, I think, with, um, our business development folks, working closely with, you know, our, uh, executive or others. I think that constant point of communication is, is really critical as we look to develop these transformational opportunities into the future.
And Wes, you've been very, very patient, but I am seeing Jeff wants to jump in. So I'll let Jeff, uh, Jeff, uh, uh, add to that and then we'll move to Wes.
I, I would just add, I, I feel like, um, Ken, your, your question is a big part of my job is trying to identify what the value proposition is related to these, these prior areas that we've identified and where the gaps are. Uh, and it might be very different depending on the industry. In the case of hydrogen or, or agriculture, it might be, we need a rail crossing between X and Y. And I know this is, this is the case in the Heartland. Uh, so it might be a physical, uh, uh, infrastructure piece. In the case of something like software or, or video games, it might be a digital media tax credit that we're missing, that other jurisdictions have and that are putting, our lack of that tax credit is putting at us, us at a disadvantage in relation to these other jurisdictions. Um, but to, to Ria's point, you know, if you're aware of gaps as a city council of what you would like to see happen in a specific industry- in a specific industry, we, we'd love to hear about, about your perspective on whatever the case may be.
So Ken, I hope we've given you some food for thought. I am going to move to Wes, and if you have a follow-up, please reach out and, and connect with us directly. Okay, so Wes, over to you.
Thanks, Bernie. And, and perhaps it's, it's a, it's a question that you, you've heard before, and it's sort of a follow-on to Ken, but we're quite proud of the idea that we have the Lakeview Business District coming online, simply because of its proximity to the Henday, plus it's got a rail line right next to it. So it's well-positioned to be a part of the solution to this logistics chain question. My, my question, though, is when a source locator starts to take a look at regions for possible location, what, what's the timeline that they, like, is it a year out, is it three years out, or? Because we have work to do in order to make Lakeview viable, right? And so if you were to say to us, you know, like, get on it, because people are looking already, I suspect that's happening, but, but what's the timeline for a source locator? So they look at Lakeview. It's not serviced yet, but it will be in the future. Like, is, is it normally three years out, five years out, or, or? Do you have a sense of that?
Well, we haven't heard from Sheldon yet, and he works in the engineering field, and so I'll start with him and then ask any of my colleagues to collaborate.
Yeah, I'll make a, a couple of high-level comments, and then I might pass it to Ria for some specifics. But if every, every deal is different, and, and I think, I think the, you know, that, that isn't, that isn't a hard and fast answer that I think you're looking for, but it, but it truly is. And, and a lot of what we've done with Edmonton Global, like even, even when we talk about how we've set up the organization and the commitment that every, every shareholder gives us for, let's say, three years of, of funding at a time, is, is really based on the fact that a lot of these are long lead times for decisions. Like, it could take years from the time that a phone call comes in to actually going through and introducing them to the region, the assets that we have, and, and they've got their own internal decision-making that, that factors in there. And then, you know, even right now, we had a whole bunch, we had quite a few announcements that ended up getting pushed back because of the pandemic, and so that also factors in. So that, so the timing is, is very, very specific. But they're not all slow. And I, I sat next to, next to the president of Champion Foods, and he talked to me about when Champion was going to build their new facility, new facility in Parkland. They were looking for, for a, a location that was ready. And they said they actually had a hard time finding, finding a, a physical spot that was serviced and ready for them to go. And, and quite often, like, when it comes to engineering, a lot of the servicing that we've done, that we do is, we'll put the, the general servicing in for the entire area, but the specific servicing is, is very unique to the, to the company that plans to go in there. And, and so I think there was a lesson there with Champion Foods, is that they came close to, like, they were really concerned that they weren't going to have a spot to put that big facility, because their definition of what was ready was different than what the municipality's decision was for what was ready. And then one more point that, that's worthwhile noting is that there is opportunities out there where some people are looking to invest in a, in a ready deal. You know, show me, show me the deal that you've got. And so part of what Edmonton Global is doing as well is trying to get investment-ready deals that are within our priority sectors, and, and one of those is in agriculture. And, and so, so I think we're, you know, very broad, and so, you know, I apologize, Wes, for not being specific to your question and giving you a firm time. But hopefully, that gets you a little, a little flavor. I think when, when you're going through to develop a, a place like Lakeview, it, it is important to be ready. And, and being ready means, you know, being ready with lots that are serviced, that somebody can go in there. Because usually, the time it takes to actually go through design approvals, get things ready for servicing, there's a long lead time. And if you end up missing that window for the decision, you might not even be aware of all the work that's been done ahead of time of, of what they're doing to get to the decision. But when they make the decision to go, you, you don't have a year or two years to say, okay, well, let, let us get the pipe in the ground, right? So, so there's some, there's some challenges there, too. So always, always best to be prepared. I don't know, Ria, do, do you have anything else that you can maybe add to that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's important to also recognize just how long it can take a lead to convert to a final investment decision. And the World Bank actually states that it takes, on average, three to five years for a lead to convert into a final investment decision. And so it, these things do, in fact, take time. And to Sheldon's point, I do think when opportunities are investment-ready, we're also adding that time to that investment-ready deal. So it, this is a, this is a long process, but I do think investment readiness is a, is a key component to it.
Okay, so hopefully that answers your question, Wes, and thank you. We'll move on to Mike. And I know councillor Julie, I'm going to make sure we end it new. We have eight minutes left. If anybody has a question in the queue, please raise your electronic hand. But Mike, over you.
Yeah, just, Jeff, amazing data on the transportation corridor on, on the rail and logistics to, to Asia. A, a real eye-opener, so thanks for that. I love the way you presented in, in real data terms. I, I'd like to kind of just shift a little bit, though, in, in terms of the biopharma, it seems to me that a good, clean industry, kind of high-tech, that, that would be really suitable for St. Albert. Had, had any thoughts gone into that, the, the kind of the research side of it, or even the, the manufacturing side? I think, I think that would, I'd, I'd love to hear a little bit more about that and how that might fit for St. Albert if we have time.
Jeff, over to you.
I, I might just comment a little bit, and, and it ties back also to Wes's question around, you know, how long it takes. You know, I know biopharma companies are looking for, for lab space, and I know there's a shortage of lab space in, in the region, that we've, we've been told that. So, you know, if St. Albert were to be able to identify existing lab space, or, you know, even build out lab space based on a, some interest from, from a company or something like that, that, that could be a big attractor, I think, to, for, for that sector. And, yeah, I don't know if, if you have a, an inventory of, of labs, existing lab space in the space, but I'd be very curious, and as would my colleagues leading the bio sector, on, on understanding better kind of what assets you have in the region and that space, Mike.
But, but what you're saying is there is actually a, a pent-up demand, if we will, I, I guess, that that could be something that would be available and ready for St. Albert to try and leverage. We probably, probably should have a deeper dive discussion on that, if that's the case.
Yeah, we will look to, I guess, your organization to initiate that with us. We've mentioned Mike a few times. And we obviously, you know, connect with him, or can connect at this level again, if that's your preference. But I think the initiative and the interest will be initiated by you, I think, councillor Julie, if that's appropriate. For any follow-up that you want to have with us directly?
Yeah, we can absolutely arrange that. I would bet that it'd be Trevor to coordinate that. Or Derek or Mike. All right, anything else in the room? Excellent. Well, we're three minutes shy, so thank you so much for joining us today. Really good information. I also really appreciated the, the information on, on logistics. I'm seeing Mike turn on his mic. Did you want to say anything before we, we wrap up?
I, I guess I just want to say, how the heck can we get the Site Selectors Conference or sub-conference moved from places like Dallas and Denver and Seattle and get a subcommittee moved to Edmonton so that people really see it? Maybe, maybe we don't want to do it right now when it's cold, but.
You know, it's a great point. We have hydrogen coming here in April, the commitment for the hydrogen conference. So, Ria, maybe you could just close on that note, because that's an exciting piece that's coming to Edmonton.
Yeah, I think we've got, we've got a number of opportunities and conferences that are certainly coming on to, to Edmonton and the Edmonton Metropolitan Region, but I do want to touch on the site selector piece really quickly. We are looking to arrange a familiarization tour with site selectors in 2021, so in late 2021. And we look forward to working closely with your ED, 2022, apologies. We are in 2022, oh my goodness. Thank you, Jeff. He's the numbers guy for sure, in 2022. So you, hopefully, you'll hear that through your EDO network, and it'll be, it'll be upcoming. But, yeah, we, we hear that as, as certainly a huge point and an opportunity for us going forward.
Okay, so thank you. I would just like to conclude by thanking our team and your team for being so interested and attentive and giving us a chance to go deeper into this important topic. And again, I want to close with thanking you for your ongoing support and commitment to Edmonton Global, as demonstrated at your last council meeting. We look forward to hearing from you and how you want to explore some of these things in more details with our team. And have a great weekend, everybody. It's Friday.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a good time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.